Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin. The City of Las Vegas Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Chairman Goines?
Present.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Steinman?
Present.
Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Present.
Thank you.
Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Channel 2. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclvtv. The proceedings will be broadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and the following Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Before we get started on official business, I'd just like to say, "Go Rebels!" They just tipped off at 7:00 o'clock, so wish them well this evening, the home team. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 14, 2008 Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Dunham, your vote didn't register. Thank you.
And that motion has passed. Turn it over to staff for housekeeping.
Chairman, we have the following housekeeping items. Item 6 and 7, WVR 26441, VAC 26443 is the vacation proposed near Bowler and First. The applicant's requested abeyance until March 27. Items 16 and 17, GPA 25625 and ZON 25626, these are the city-initiated applications near Anne and 215. The applicant, the city, has requested that these items be tabled. I would further note that when we're ready to proceed, there will be a new public hearing notification on those items. Items 26, 27, and 28, VAR 26385, SUP 26383, and SDR 26386, this is the development proposed near Charleston and Hinson. The applicant's requested abeyance until March 27. And the last item is Item 38, SDR 26709, is the Performing Arts Center on Grand Central Parkway. The applicant's requested abeyance until March 27.
Thank you. Motion to approve the abeyance of which all items is read into the record?
So moved.
Motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion has passed. Moving on to the one-motion-one-vote items. The following are items that may be considered in one-motion-one-vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public-hearing items. All public-hearing and non-public-hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Our one-motion-one-vote items, Items 8 through 15, motion to approve. Let me read them all in.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Staff requested Item 10, SUP 26487, the tattoo parlor on Las Vegas Boulevard be pulled from one motion-one vote.
Okay, thank you.
That is the item that I was coming up on.
Thank you very much. Item 8, SDR 24242, applicant owner, Boca Park Marketplace LV LLC, request for a major amendment to an opposed site development plan review, Z0030-927, for two proposed single-story commercial retail buildings with a total floor area of 34,400 square feet and an existing shopping center located at the northeast corner of Rand Park Boulevard and Charleston Boulevard. Note, the retail buildings have been amended to 36,800 square feet in total floor area. Item 9, VAR 266606, applicant Mammoth Underground LLC, owner Longley Construction Company, Inc., request for a variance to allow a 10-foot-high perimeter fence where 8 feet is the maximum height allowed at 419, 421, and 507 West Bonanza Road. Item 11, SUP 26608, applicant owner, Rosati's Owner NS Southwest Number 4 LLC, request for a special-use permit for a proposed restaurant with a beer-wine-cooler on-sale establishment at 8001 North Durango Drive, Suite 110. Item 12, SUP 266619, applicant owner Dollar Loan Center, owner Decatur Crossing Center, LLC, request for a special-use permit for a proposed financial institution specified and a waiver to allow an 81-foot residential separation where 200 feet is required at 280 South Decatur Boulevard. Item 13, SUP 26626, applicant Drake Development LLC, owner the Pfizer Family Revital Trust of 1997, request for a special-use permit for a proposed retail establishment with beer-wine-cooler off-sale located at 7595 Vegas Drive. Item 14, VAC 26611, applicant owner Bart Maybe, petition to vacate an existing 20-foot drainage easement generally located on the northeast corner of Maggie Avenue and Coke Street. Item 15, VAC 26629, applicant Great American Capital, owner Smoke Ranch Development, LLC, petition to vacate 10-foot-wide public drainage easement generally located 1,265 feet east of the southeast corner of North Buffalo Drive and Smoke Ranch Road. Those are the one-motion-one-vote items read into the record. Anybody like to speak on any of these items? Please come forward.
I'd like to ask you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know why staff's pulling that one. There must be a reason. Must be protests?
Yes.
Do you have somebody that'd like to speak to the item? Additionally, we have not received confirmation from the applicant that they accept the conditions of approval.
Oh, okay. But I notice also, on numbers 9 through 13, there are substantial protests. Is it our job to put those on record that they were there? Do we have to bring them forward because they're protest against approval?
If I may?
Yes.
The header on one motion-one vote only says that these are items recommended for approval and that we have received the applicant's acquiescence to the conditions. The protests come forward, they're before you this evening, and they will be before the council, but it's up to the Planning Commission if you wish to pull the item to have it heard separately.
That's fine. I don't have any special reason on any of these, except the one that you're going to talk about, that you asked to be pulled, but I just thought it should be noted that there are several protests. Thank you.
Public hearing's open on the one-motion-one-vote item. Ms. Farlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Number 9, is that a fence or a wall?
It is titled as a fence.
If it was a wall, a nice decorative wall, I wouldn't have any complaints about it. But if it's going to be a fence, I got a problem.
Thank you. We'll get an answer for you. Would anybody else like to speak on an item?
My name's Cale Galker, 421 West Bonanza. I'm representing Mammoth Underground. That's in Item 9.
Correct.
There's currently a wall already there. The wall varies in height from like 4'6 to 6' height.
We'll pull it, and we'll hear it. Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll close the public hearing on the one-motion-one-vote items and entertain a motion on Items 8, 11 through 15.
I'd like to make a motion on Items 8, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 for approval. Subject all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. That motion has passed.
All items go forward to City Council on April 16.
And we'll go back and pull Item 9, VAR 26606. Applicant? Staff?
Staff finds this application will not adversely impact adjacent properties and recommends
My name's Cale Galker, again representing 421 West Bonanza and Mammoth Underground. We currently have a block wall that surrounds the north and west side of the property. The block wall is topped currently with a barbed wire fence. We want to remove the barbed wire fence, and directly adjacent to the wall, on the property owner's side, we want to build a wrought iron fence that'll extend to the height of 10 feet. We've experienced repeated break-ins, and we've had a lot of theft and damage and vandalism, partly because of the location we're at and the high amount of vagrants we have in that area. But the wall's existing. We want to take down the barbed wire and just build a wrought iron fence directly behind it. So I think it's going to make it look better in the area, and hopefully it helps us reduce the theft and loss we've had.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We'll take any comments on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Farlow, again. I have no problem with that at all. I was afraid that they were going to take down the block wall and put up a cyclone fence. That was my problem.
Thank you. No more comments. We'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion on Item 9.
Motion number 9, variance 26606, recommend approval. Subject all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And that variance for a proposed addition to the wall is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the City Clerk.
Mr. Galker, I just wanted to say that I want to commend you for staying in that place. I know that was Ted Longley's business years ago, and you guys took it over, but for wanting to stay in that location, I have to commend you. Thank you.
Item 10, SUP 26487. Staff?
Staff notes the site is located within the Las Vegas Downtown Centennial Plan and as such is not subject to the automatic application of parking requirements. However, the applicant has provided four parking spaces on-site. Staff believes this to be adequate and recommends approval.
Applicant?
Brian Perkins, 1501 South Las Vegas Boulevard. I am the occupant that's going into that space. I'm a 50-year-old artist who is submitting for a special-use permit for tattoo and body piercing. I don't do body piercing, and mostly everything that's going to go through that studio will be art-related. There will be no paraphernalia, no smoke shop, none of the stuff that we usually see. This is my art studio. I am also a 30-year tattooist, 30-year airbrusher, pinstriper, muralist, and sign painter. And I believe my talent not used is wasted, and that's why we're submitting for this permit.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I do own property within the notice area.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody speak for or against the item, please come forward.
Yes, Dick Bonar, 2300 West Sahara Avenue. I represent the people who actually surround the property on the east and the south. And this item was up on the screen a moment ago. The applicant noted that there are 88 parking spaces to his east, and the fact of the matter is, that's not the applicant's property. And yet, he made one comment once to one of the principals that he intended to use that parking. We want to make sure that he understands he's not allowed to use that parking. We don't have any parking, shared agreement with him. Don't intend to enter in such an agreement with him. And frankly, if we have to, we will fence it and do towing according to law if we're going to have to do that. He claims, or at least somebody claims, that there are five parking spaces on the site. What I'd like to do is send up some photographs.
Mr. Bonar, can you point again to your drawing where you're indicating?
There's a statement here that says 88 parking spaces, and it was on his provided drawing, so I assumed it was him that put it on rather than your own staff.
And then I went through plan review, and we also checked into the property, the section, and we came up with the four.
Hold on, sir.
I'm sorry.
We'll give you your side, yes.
North is now this way.
Okay, is that it?
No, I would like to show you some of what you're getting up there.
Continue.
This is a picture showing the four parking spaces that recently were topped and striped. And they are shown at 18 feet long, except the fourth space is short by at least a half a foot. And there is no fifth space, as your staff says that there is. So there's three plus a handicap, a total of four.
We'll get clarification on that.
Okay. And I understand that this isn't subject to the parking standards that are normally applied, but you do have the ability to impose the normal parking on a property in this downtown area, if it's a freestanding use. This is a freestanding use. And quite frankly, the total square footage of this building, we're only talking about one suite for this gentleman, total square footage of this building requires nine parking spaces, so that means the second suite has no parking provided for it if he takes all the four and you allow it to go forward with four. Not objecting to the use. I'm objecting to the fact that he may spill over in the parking, and frankly, we, as neighbors, don't want that to happen. Don't want to have to tow anybody.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak for or against the item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Let me refer to staff to give us a detailed but brief analysis on how we arrived at this parking.
Actually, it's pretty simple. The report, the written report is in error. It says five, but there are in fact four. But we do think four is appropriate and adequate for the use.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Quinn?
Sir, at one given time, on a good day, how many clients do you project being in your facility, you know, at one time, like on a great day?
We only have two working studios at a time.
Which would be two cars or something like that? Thank you.
Probably. And also, I've approached the owner and told him that we would rent, you know, a space and that we had no conflict in causing a problem there at all when I found out that those were the only spaces. Also, my leaser, my landlord, put in his thing to the Planning Commission that they were not tending to lease that suite that's next to me at all due to renovation.
I did drive your parking lot and look at the area, and is there parking on the street as well, like a couple spaces in the front, or is that not clear?
No, not in the front. That's all Las Vegas Boulevard.
No, so just all in the back?
It's just those ones on the side.
Right.
And that orange building that you saw with the picture, that is the building next to my building.
I understand.
The white picture that we saw on first is the building that I look to occupy, right there.
But you have two stations, and on a great day, you'd have two to four people?
Two to four people at the max.
That would be a good day for you.
Usually, people come in together.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any more questions, comments? Commissioner Steinman?
I'd like to know, where's the parking for the address of 1445 Las Vegas Boulevard, the one next door to you?
That is, that was what was in question with Planning Commission.
That is a good question.
When it was brought to our attention. And now, we have removed the "for lease" number on there. It says "for lease." We're going to wipe that out, too. I don't know why the kids didn't paint that out, too, but we're removing that sign. And, I mean, the center suite that you're looking at there has been totally renovated from HVAC on top to the roof to the walls, the ceilings, everything, and the suite next to it has not yet been renovated. So I guess they were trying to get an easement from OG and Boston Pizza, the same property owner owns that, and he's just set in his ways and he's not interested in it, and that's fine. You know, he's had that for a long time. And then I guess we tried to, or the landlord tried to impose an easement, and that kind of upset everybody over there, so now they've sent this gentleman to make sure that their point is clear, and I take their point very clearly.
But you're telling me there's, there'll be no one in 1445?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
But it can't happen. So I'm going to ask staff, where does 1445 park?
Well, that's what we submitted to plan review, that we weren't going to, that the landlord would not lease that suite.
I'm not sure you can do that.
Again, if I may, the applicant can make whatever private agreements, I'm sorry, the property owner can make whatever private agreements that they care to.
That's right.
But again, we can't require that that suite be occupied.
And we have to look at it as though it's going to be occupied.
Yes, sir.
And if you want to be there 20 years, somewhere down the line, it's going to be occupied. And my question is, where are they going to park?
We're under the understanding of that and the position of the landlord and myself, until that position is resolved, they won't be allowed to lease it or will lease it. That's why all the numbers will come off of the signs and everything else.
Person has space they want to get it leased, if they own it.
That building has not been leased for over two years.
Well, that's fine.
And he's just renovated that one that I want to go into, and...
I don't think this makes a lot of sense on this parking at all. There's something wrong here. And also, I don't see anything here that says what you're going to do to make your building look better.
We've renovated the total inside, and I was going to...
No, inside, I don't care about.
Okay, and I wanted to bring all those, how great our studio is upgraded now, and to seek your permission on the 16th, before I install the signage in the frontal, signage, the lettering and, you know, the window decoration, and paint the front of the building.
Okay, I don't see anything about that. That bothers me, that you do something and you're not going to renovate the exterior.
Absolutely, absolutely, sir, will, and already started to have, as you see in the picture there. You have the blackouts that are above the windows and below it.
I don't see anything.
And what happened to it?
It's gone. There it is.
Can we go back to the...
Okay. And there are brand-new blinds in between, in the windows. That's the white source.
We can't see your finger, so you can just tell us. Just tell us, and we'll follow along with you.
I thought you were looking at...
There's a marquee, there's a marquee on that building.
The sign.
A sign marquee.
Yes.
What's happened to that?
We want to install that and make that look like the downtown sign, with yellow trim, the lights going like this, LV ink in the center.
Is it neon?
It's not neon, but it's the old style of the bulb that rotates around. And it is, you know, a vintage sign. That's why I wanted to keep that.
Yeah, it does look better.
Absolutely.
Almost looks like it's falling down.
So, yellow border, lit up, LV ink inside, all of our window lettering across our window, you know, for the...
Well, it's up to staff to decide, but I just don't see any detail about what you're going to do the outside of this building to make it look better on Las Vegas Boulevard. It's timed that we keep cleaning up Las Vegas Boulevard and make it look like a proper byway. And if we just put in a tattoo parlor, or whatever it's going to be, and it shows that, we've got one across the street, too.
Yes, sir, and I agree totally with you.
Yeah.
I would invite all commissioners to come down to the store and look and see how changed, renovated, upgraded, and beautiful it is on the inside, and I'm willing to do the same thing to the outside, from the nostalgic sign.
Okay, well, we'll have to decide how...
Mr. Steinman, I think we need to look at that Boston Pizza sign, if anything, in the background. Any more questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. To me, it's extremely obvious that we have an existing building, we have an existing parcel, and we have existing parking. That's what we have today. So either, this guy's going to come in with relatively low-intense use, or we get somebody else that comes in there with a wedding chapel, or a liquor store, or something else. So if it's not this guy, it's somebody else. So, building is not going to go down. We got the existing parking, we got the existing parcels. We have to deal with that. So I guess it comes down to, is this an appropriate use in this building? And to me, it's a low-intense use, so I really don't have a problem with it.
Commissioner Quinn?
I just wanted, for your landlord's knowledge, that this, the little handicap person painted on the ground is not sufficient to meet the needs of a disabled person parking there. So for a few hundred bucks, you can put the right sign up. Could you mention that to him as well?
Absolutely.
And you're going to have my support on this project, because I agree with Commissioner Dunham, that something's coming in there. And if you look across the street, they did a beautiful job, and if it was me and I was you, I'd want to look better. So, good luck to you.
Absolutely, absolutely, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Yeah. I'm not getting a tat, but I will tell you that the Boston Pizza has great stramboli and good pizza. I go there all the time, as you can well see.
I'm addicted to it already.
I don't think it's going to be a parking problem, and I agree with the staff. My motion would be to follow their recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion's on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote on Item 10. That motion has passed, with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
No, go forward to City Council on April 16.
That concludes our one-motion-one vote. Moving on to public hearing items, Item 18, ZON 25758, applicant Southwest Desert Equities, LLC, owner KR Land Company, LLC et al., request for rezoning from U undeveloped PCD Plan Community Development to PD Plan Development at the southeast corner of Hualapai Highway and Deer Springs Way. Companion items 19 and 20 as well. Item 19, SDR 25760, applicant Southwest Desert Equities, owner KRL Land Company, LLC, request for a site development plan for a proposed 200,000, 300-square-foot retail development. Note, the item has been amended to a 205,000-square-foot retail development. Item 20, VAC 25759, applicant owner is the same, request to petition to vacate portions of US government patent easements generally located east of Hualapai Highway and south of Deer Springs Way. Staff?
One of the main purposes of the plan development zoning that the applicant has requested is to encourage area-sensitive site planning and design. Staff notes that the applicant is proposing a 205,000-square-foot retail development and finds that a development of that size is not sensitive to the rural preservation area to the north of the site. Additionally, staff notes that the site is in the accepted area of the interlocal agreement between Clark County and the City of Las Vegas. Because that agreement states that areas designated as accepted shall remain as rural and never have neighborhood preservation areas for the life of the agreement, staff is unable to support these applications.
Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm Mark Fiorentino, representing the applicant on all three of these matters. I wanted to start with aerial photograph to kind of give you a little summary of the site and the surrounding area. I don't know how well you can see this, but the site that's before you tonight is bounded by this blue line here. This is 215, obviously. This is the Hualapai alignment, and there is existing on-and-off ramp in Hualapai at this location. This, immediately to the west, is the Providence Master Plan Community. As you can see from the aerial photograph, these are apartments that are under construction today. They're almost nearly complete. They're a little further along than the photograph shows. To the southwest of this site is the Centennial High School. Immediately adjacent to the north and east and south are all vacant properties. The property to the east, however, is reserved for a pump station and reservoir site with the Las Vegas Valley Water District. To the south of the site, there's a reservation for a power substation on the south side of 215. And also, on the south side of 215, you have a fairly large public facility reservation. That's gone through a number of different changes over the last few years. I think the most recent proposal is to do a park there. It has had other designations in the past, but I believe the most current plan for that use is a park facility. I want to take a second and show you the master plan of streets and highways for this area. I know this is information that is familiar to all of you, but here's the site here. This is the 215. This is Hualapai. This is significant, I think, in terms of your decision tonight. Hualapai is on your master plan of streets and highways, 100-foot right-of-way. Actually, the total width of the right-of-way will be 120 feet by the time you include some trail provisions along it, but it's 100 feet of travel lanes. It connects a future interchange at Horse Drive on US 95 with the interchange on 215. Today, it doesn't carry an awful lot of traffic. In the very near future, it will, as is shown on your master plan of streets and highways. Also, Deer Springs, this is the street that bounds the northern part of our property, is shown on your master plan of streets and highways, is an 80-foot right-of-way. Many of the portions of Deer Springs are in, either completely or different portions of them are in. As you see, again, from your planning map, it is designed to carry traffic east-west between these two interchanges. This is the Durango Drive interchange at 215, and this is Hualapai. There is some history to this parcel. I'm only going to focus on probably the most recent history. I know many of you will remember this, about nine months ago, I believe, because of what I just showed you in terms of traffic patterns and so forth, and other developments in the area, the City Council approved a general plan amendment for this property to the PCD zoning district. Obviously, the zone change that you have before you tonight, PD conforms with that change. At the time, we were asked, what will we do on the property? I think we answered honestly that we weren't sure, but that if we had to predict, we would bring a use like what we have before you tonight, because of the range of uses that would be appropriate here, we think this is the most appropriate use. I wanted to take a second and show you the, some of the sample elevations for the project. The color didn't come out as well on this, and probably you don't see it any better, but what I wanted to point out to you here is, we spent a great deal of time on some of the architectural features of the center, to try to make it, at the same time, both unique, I think this one shows it a little bit better, but not in any way garish that would make it incompatible with the surrounding area. So you have, that, these are also in your backup, just examples of what the architecture will look like. That is, by the way, one of the advantages of having the P D application in front of you is, normally when you do the P D application, you get a set of standards, and then the actual development comes later, and so there is some lead time between the standards and the development. Here, because you have the site plan in front of you, these are actual elevations, so, and these are incorporated into the standards, so you know, unless someone files an application that would come before you, that this is what you're going to get. I wanted to take a second also on the site plan, this is actually the landscape plan, you can see if you could focus on it, it has a substantial amount of landscaping, both on all of its periphery and interior to the site. I think your staff report indicates, and I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, but happy to answer questions as you have, they did a very accurate and very detailed chart for you comparing what the requirements were to what we were actually providing. In terms of total square footage for coverage of this site, we're below what would be allowed, substantially below, we have greater setbacks in many of the areas, including along Deer Springs, that would otherwise be required, so we're setback further than what the requirements would be. We have less signage in terms of total square footage for the signage, and a number of freestanding signs than would be allowed, and we have substantially more landscaping in this project than would otherwise be required. I think staff actually did you a tabulation by tree, and compared what we would have to do with what we did. We have had a number of meetings on this site and project, of course, they started nine months ago or so when we did the general plan amendment, but just specifically with this site plan and these uses, we've had two neighborhood meetings. That's the reason why we've been held a couple times, is to try to incorporate comments that we've heard through that process into the site plan that's before you. We have made a number of changes in response to what we've heard, and I'd just like to highlight the ones that I think are most significant. On the original site plan, let me show you the original site. We had a very difficult design constraint to work around, because this is a public right-of-way, and until we had begun to work with your Public Works and some of the other concerns that we heard, we thought we had to maintain this public right-of-way, so it constrained what we could do with the anchor. And so in the original design, the anchor was twisted to face more north-south, and that obviously generated some concerns of folks who have an interest in this area, because it exposed the rear and deliveries of the, of the anchor to view from Deer Springs. We've been able to work it out, not only with Public Works, but with this property owner here, the reason, original reason we needed this right-of-way to be maintained, is there are two parcels here that we do not control. This one is a privately-held parcel, it's a remnant piece, the county has approved two cell towers on that site, they're not yet constructed, but they have been approved, and we have worked very closely with this property owner, who has agreed to accept a private access easement to the parcel, because all he needs to do is get in and out to maintain the cell towers. This is a remnant B L M parcel, and I don't even wanna predict how it will ever get developed. It is not currently nominated for sale, and so even before it could be fallen to private hands, it's at least a couple of years from now, because that process takes that long. So because we were able to work around this public right-of-way, we were able to incorporate some changes that the neighbors otherwise asked for. We were able to slide the anchor back, locate all of the deliveries and more intense uses up against the right-of-way, the two-fifteen right-of-way, we're also be able to bring in a, another roadway here to provide future access to the B L M parcel, in case the private access we're providing here isn't good enough. We eliminated two of the pads along the Deer Springs frontage to make that less intense. We also made the square footage higher, we added about six thousand square feet. There is a reason we did that, it's because at least a couple of the people in our neighborhood meetings literally asked us to do that. They said they, whatever the decision is, good, bad, or indifferent, they do not wanna come down here any more than they absolutely have to, and so please show in the site plan the worst-case scenario, which is what we did, which is why you have the increase in square footage. Now, that doesn't mean we will build that square footage, but that means that is the worst-case scenario. The other substantial changes that we made, we made the sign requirements more restrictive, I think we lowered some of the heights of the signs, we prohibited signs above roof lines, we required them to be backlit, and we prohibited exposed neon. We also substantially increased the landscaping buffer along Conquistador, which is the eastern boundary of our site, and along Deer Springs, where we are trying to create a buffer between the pads and Deer Springs. So let me show you on the aerial, the areas we're talking about. Substantially increased the landscaping buffer here along Deer Springs, and here along Conquistador. And it's probably worth just a minute to show you the details of that, these are two of the pads, but it's substantially similar for all four of the pads along the front. Each of them will be buffered by essentially two rows of landscaping, this is a row of landscaping with trees, a sidewalk, and then a second row of landscaping with staggered trees to create a complete screen with the trees. Also, we have grading issues on this site sloping from west to east, we're going to exaggerate those grades, so that each of the drive-throughs then will be below grade, so that in addition to the landscaping buffer, we've depressed them so that they're below grade, so they will be screened by two rows of landscaping, a sidewalk, and in the middle of the berm that leads down to the depression, we've added a decorative block wall in the middle. So now you have a complete screen between two rows of landscaping, a block wall, and a depression to screen the drive-throughs from Deer Springs Way. That is probably the most significant, besides changing the building orientations change that we made. Not everyone is completely satisfied, and I know you're gonna hear from some folks that didn't, or aren't. Couple of other brief things, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. On the staff report, we absolutely understand and respect staff's opinion, as far as I know, they've been very consistent in projects that have the potential to impact R and P areas, they've been very conservative, and as far as I know, been consistent in recommending denial. In this particular instance, we just respectfully disagree with that, this, because of the roadways that are here and the other uses that are around, this is just not an appropriate location for rural densities on our particular site. If we were north of Deer Springs, I think that we would be having a different discussion. But a property sandwiched between Deer Springs and the two-fifteen is just, and a pump station on one side and a power station on the other, is not an appropriate location for rural densities. We have done an awful lot of work, as you've seen, in terms of beeping up landscaping and buffers and, and berms and so forth, and reducing some of the intensity along Deer Springs to, to create as good a buffer as we can, frankly, when you only have twenty-two acres in this area, there's only so much that you can do, and we're hoping that the work that we've done is sufficient to gain your support. Finally, on the site development plan review application, there is a proposed change to condition number nineteen, and we've worked with you, and it relates to what I was showing you earlier on the, the vacation of the public right-of-way. Basically, the condition ensures that there'll be sewer access to this parcel back here, and we asked Public Works to consider a purely technical change to the way they wrote it, so that it could be, we could accommodate it privately through that same private access easement, and so they have suggested some language that would accomplish that, and we've agreed to it, and I don't know if they wanna read into the record, or, but I've reviewed and agreed to Public Works' change.
We'll, we'll get it when we get to that portion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm finished with my presentation, I'm happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience wanna speak for or against this item, please come forward, we will set the timer to three minutes. Please state your name and address.
I'm Richard Lemon, I live at ninety-six forty-five Haley Avenue. I'd like to give a very brief history of this area, as you all know, in January of two thousand and two, the city and county entered an interlocal agreement, in part establishing a rural neighborhood preservation area. It is shown as the light green on that constant land map of the city. The applicant's parcel I marked in red. A year later, in two thousand and three, when the official map was adopted, they created a transition, a rural transitional zone between the R and P and the higher densities, and along the two-fifteen. About a year ago, a request was made to adopt, to rezone the Centennial Hills Sector Plan in this area to Plan Community Development. At that time, staff recommended denial, said the site was only about one-quarter of the minimum acreage recommended for the P C D. The P C designation could permit a density would be incompatible with the adjacent R and P, and the site contained two and a half acres of the protected R and P. At that time, this planning commission recommended denial, I believe it was because the applicant did not provide any plans at that time. June of last year, the city approved the rezoning to Plan Community Development. Now, the applicant's requesting P D development with a site plan for two-hundred-five-thousand square foot retail center. Planning staff has recommended denial, stating the proposal does not meet the intent of the Plan Development District defined in Title nineteen point zero-six point zero-five-zero. The title lists ten goals, the staff report goes over all ten goals, and shows that the plan does not meet any of these goals. In the applicant's Providence Square Master Development Plan, the plan states, I quote, "The Providence Development Plan meets all the goals and objects of Section nineteen point oh-six point oh-five-oh." I ask you who's correct, the planning staff that says it doesn't meet any of the ten goals, or the applicant who says they meet all the goals? The staff report states the uses that are proposed are consistent with C-one limited commercial zoning district. This district should be located on the periphery of residential neighborhoods and along major retail corridors. Hualapai Way and Deer Springs Way are totally residential corridors in this area. In the applicant's master development plan, the plan states the land use is neighborhood commercial. Again, I ask who's correct, planning staff that says it's C-one limited commercial, or the applicant who says it's neighborhood commercial? Again, I am not aware of the neighborhood commercial land use category, there is a neighborhood center category that consists of sites that are five acres or less, located within master plan communities, and based upon the need to support the master plan area. In the applicant's justification letter, it says in part, "Providence Square will provide a variety of commercial development that is necessary to serve the existing residents in the area, including travelers along the Beltway." I have about fifteen seconds, please.
Take your time.
They admit in this justification letter that the commercial site will bring travelers off of two-fifteen into the rural neighborhood. This two-fifteen interchange is the main access for the seven-thousand-five-hundred homes that are to be built in Providence. The staff reports the applicant's plan could create traffic demands that exceed the capacity. Because the proposal does not meet the intent of Title nineteen, or the master plan, and is incompatible with the adjacent rural neighborhood preservation, I request you recommend denial of the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else like to speak? All those that would like to speak, please come forward at this time, there's two microphones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street, three things. Number one, I think that this, this location is a, is a proper site for a, for a shopping center, I mean, we've got the two-fifteen right at the interchange, I mean, this is the place. The second thing that I, I wanna bring up is the landscaping. I don't want this looking like the northwest corner of the interchange of Decatur and two-fifteen, where they have no trees out there at all, they've got some markers up there, but, I mean, it's, it's too bare, it's too bare. Now, what I saw on the, on the, on the overhead there, it looked like they were trees, and if they're trees, that's fine, but if they're bushes, I don't think, that's not, that's not enough, we need some landscaping there. Number three, it says that they weren't gonna have exposed neon that was prohibited, I have no problem with exposed neon, I mean, exposed neon's a nice spot, but, and the fourth thing, he mentioned that it was gonna be a depressed drive, and does any, how is this gonna drain? Because everything in there drains to the, to the, to the southeast, right? And if, and if he's gonna lower, if he's gonna lower this, this, this driving property, I, I, I don't know, they're gonna have a big rain up there, I'd have serious problems with that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. There are two microphones here, please come on up, try not to be redundant in your comments, if you've heard your neighbor or say it, say something else, thank you.
My name is Bridget Salvi, I live at seven-zero-three-zero North Conquistor Drive in the county, but this property is going to be my neighbor. I have some packets I'd like to submit to the clerk, she can give to each, I might be short ones, the city attorney might not get anything.
(laughing) Ms. Salvi, real quick-
I'm sorry, sir, I had to guess how many would be here tonight.
Ms. Salvi, real quick, can you show me on, on that map, did Mr. Fiorentino leave a map up there where you live in relationship to this property?
I can show you on the map that I've set down, I don't know if it's on focus.
Perfect. I'm sure our attorneys read his fair share for today.
Thanks.
At the pencil tip is where I reside. Is that sufficient?
And can you point to the proposed development?
The proposed development has an indicator, it is hashed in red-
Thank you.
-below the pencil.
Thank you.
Okay, I am supposing that some of you have received the packets that I've prepared for tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
They have to do with the actual existing vacancies and commercial that is on-site right now, within a short traveling distance of the proposed site, that our applicant is submitting for two-hundred-and-five-thousand square feet additional retail. Currently, and I'm just gonna overlay this right into the image on the overhead. Again, you have the same packet before you.
Can you push that up just a little bit? Perfect, thank you.
So as not to take up too much of the map below it, we have additional current, ready-to-go, much of it is ready-to-go, to be occupied, retail at this point in time, some of it is under development, as today's newspaper has released that Centennial Gateway has opened up, there's already started to break ground on their Phase Two, which will complete a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot retail and commercial site, which includes, I've got some photos, I'm just gonna lay them down on top, which includes a sportsman warehouse, a current twenty-four-hour signed contract with twenty-four Fitness, and a, I believe it's a British Fresh and Easy Market, as well as other retail which is not currently signed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt for just a moment, ma'am, are you attempting to indicate that there's plenty of other retail in the area?
Yes, sir.
Is that the gist of your-
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
As you brief, and I'm just gonna kinda spin through the photos, because we took the time, take the photos to show some actual visual support to our argument, that this site is not well-suited outside the corridor of the actual Providence boundary, it is not part of Providence, it is acquired by Providence after the fact, this property was.
I'll give you about another thirty seconds, now I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up, because if I give thirty seconds to everybody, we-
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So what we've got is, we've got additional square footage that's all around the area along the Durango Corridor, that provides for the commercial retail that is even the intent of this project alone, so I won't go through my packet, because you have it before you, but the point that I would like to also reiterate is the fact that the driving distances from the site, the edge of the existing peripheral of Providence General, the Providence Community, we have a grocery store within one-point-five miles currently open, we have another grocery store, it's a little further, probably about one-point-eight, we have Kinko's and different things that are about one-point-eight to two, we have a Walmart, a Sam's Club, and a Home Depot, which is a little further down the corridor heading east by southeast, three-point-four miles, and within the sector plan itself, it says, and I'll quote just the last sentence, "Neighborhoods furthest from Centennial Hills Town Center will have a maximum of four to five miles to drive to access supporting businesses and services they need." This is from your own Centennial land use- This is from your own Centennial land use document. This site is already supported by other existing retail and more retail that is yet being built.
Thank you.
That all of the homes within this area already have sufficient service and have sufficient, they are within the five-mile distance that was even set out by your own documents.
Thank you, Ms. Salvi.
I overran my time, but I'm going to leave the map up, because I believe some of the others would like to use it.
Okay.
Hi, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to read. I don't have it memorized as well as she does. My name is Denise Helverson, and I'm at 9840 Durrell. I happen to be her neighbor. So we actually are the closest properties to the development that we're talking about. I've lived in the Lone Mountain Preservation Area for 11 years, ever since we moved to Las Vegas. And we specifically chose the area because there's no multifamily, no commercial, and the density is two per acre. We're from the Midwest. That's what we do. Our neighborhood has totally come together to oppose this commercial development for many reasons. It'll increase traffic and bring crime to the area. And I actually spoke to Mr. Brian O'Callaghan, who's a Metro Officer of Intergovernmental Services, about the type of concerns that are associated with retail centers. He cited alarms, burglaries, large rings, disturbances, vehicle theft, and accidents. All of those things will have an impact on response time for Metro. The retail center also includes fast food facilities. And the applicant has already showed you, it's across the street from Centennial High School. That's a concern. It's a concern to parents that their kids are going to hang out at the fast food place instead of going to school. So that could be a whole nother concern. It is a repetition of several other retail centers in the area, all in approved commercial corridors, as Bridget discussed earlier. That's the Centennial Hills Master Plan, where we specifically want to see those retails in a certain area. An issue that perhaps planning didn't bring up, but is a real concern to the people in our area, because we're in a rural preservation area, where people own acreage and have horses. But there is a designated horse plan that was approved by both the city and county land use and the Las Vegas General Plan, and it runs west on Deer Springs. Now, that plan has to, that trail has to be there. But anybody riding that train, that trail, once there is a shopping center there, is going to have to ride next to heavy traffic. There's stoplights planned, and it's certainly not a setting conducive to the trail system, and not what the trail system was designed for when they were developed. I also have some packets. I wonder if somebody could.
Pass them to the clerk, please.
If you would do that, please.
Thank you.
One thing the applicant didn't bring up is, and we've always said, this is a fabulous view of the entire Las Vegas Strip. And it makes a terrific value, I think, for home sites. The applicant has actually chosen to propose the highest use for this zoning, and we understand that. You know, we know they're in business to make money, but we also submit that this is an ideal plan. It has, that could be used for many other uses. It has unobstructed city views. The Beltway is far below the site. It is.
About 10 seconds to wrap it up, please.
Thank you. And in the photographs that I've shown you is actually what is existing currently on the Beltway. If you drive west on the Beltway, you're all familiar, I'm sure, with the Summerlin area. And the Summerlin area, an award-winning developer, Howard Hughes, has built houses right on that freeway, and they have not felt it was a negative, as you can see by the photographs that I have provided for you, nor do you see any commercial in those areas, not at all. They're all in designated commercial areas, other than in the residential areas. So we have over 100 landowners in our immediate community, and more than half of them have expressed opposition by email, letters, phone calls, and we have an opposition, a petition pending that we will be presenting to the council. So our neighborhood is really firmly against this, and thanks the staff for their thorough analysis.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners. If I could just have.
Excuse me, ma'am. The last speaker, ma'am. You live in the county as well?
I'm in the county.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Mayo-Deriso. I live at 8322 Jeeves Circle, and I am actually with Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth. We are, we're now a PAC. Before, we were just an organized group, but we're getting more and more organized. We have about 2,000 people that are now in our email list. And I'm here on behalf of Northwest Residents. This group reached out to us to assist them with this, because every time something happens in the Northwest, it sets a precedence for what else happens in the other parts of our neighborhoods. So what I wanted to talk to you about, one thing I wanted to mention, when Mark was saying about Huwalapi, we need to note that I believe Huwalapi is vacated to the west. So there would not be any traffic to the west.
Believe it's south.
This is vacated.
This is vacated right here. It stops at Centennial. So that would be vacated, just when we talk about traffic flow. What I really want to talk about today, and the portion that I wanted to discuss, was your decision, and ultimately, the council's decision, to not follow what planning has, which I think, I have to say, planning did a great job on this analysis, and what they have recommended denial. Your decision will affect more than just the city. It will actually affect pretty directly, I believe, and we believe, a project in the county.
Let's stick to the city business here.
We are, but this. But there's another project.
I have to get him up and come down here.
Here is, there is two projects. And if you can see the way they set, this project at the bottom, the project at the bottom here is the project we're discussing today. This project directly adjacent to that is another project in the RMP that is a non-conforming request that's in the county, and it is a non-conforming request to increase density in this RMP area. And our argument is that by approving this today, or this today and the city council approving it, you will be setting a precedence whereby, when this non-conforming comes up in the county, they can say that it's a compatible use. And we think those trickle-down decisions, that's why it's important, this interlocal agreement, even only 2.5 acres of this are part of the interlocal agreement. But I think that when we look at these things, and they're so, in such close proximity, I too live in the county, but I am surrounded by the city. So these decisions you make affect all of us. So I think it's important to note that this project could in fact, and you know how non-conforming zoning is, you have to be able to justify compatibility. There are other things nearest that are like this. And right now, there is nothing like that. This is a rural neighborhood preservation area. So I would request that you deny this, not only on its merits, that it doesn't belong here, but in the fact that it could have a long-term effect on another project that is coming up adjacent to it in the county. The last thing I want to say is, just to get a show of hands, everybody here tonight that is in opposition to this project, if you could just get a show of hands, so you know how many neighbors took the evening to come down. Thank you.
Please raise your hand. Please raise your other hand, and then clap for the rubber. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Deschamps, 9690 Wittig Avenue. I'll be brief. I think everybody covered everything I wanted to say. I did want to reiterate, though, that Huwalapi is not a major corridor. It does not go through. It is vacated, right here, south of Centennial. So that's really not going to be a very major street. I also did my homework when I moved here, and I did a lot of, this is RMP. This is a big thing for me to decide where to move and where to build a house, and it just seems like all the time we're here trying to refight. Everybody tries to rezone. I did my homework. I knew what the property was owned when I purchased it, and I feel like everyone should also stick to those guidelines as well. We are rural. We all do have acreage, and we do have homes with horses, and we'd like to keep it, you know, RMP and rural if we can. We were, you know, upset enough that it was zoned PCD in the first place, so we have to deal with that as it is. So please request that you deny it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Bruce. I live at 9880 Elkhorn, which is probably about two blocks from where the other ladies lived. I request that you deny the project, and I also would like you to consider the value of my home. My home is on two acres, and we're in rural preservation. Nobody wants to buy a house on two acres next to a grocery store and a large commercial development. So each time you guys change the zoning and you approve these projects, the value of my property goes down. It's almost impossible to sell it. I've got Providence, almost 8,500 homes right out my kitchen window, and I don't need a grocery store or some more commercial development to bring the value down. So I request that you deny it.
Mr. Chairman, before she concludes, can you tell me how far you are from this project?
Can you kind of point it out on the map?
Two blocks.
And do you live in the county as well?
I live in the county, right. I'm about.
How many of you that are opposed live in the county? Raise your hand. Thank you.
I'm just curious, how far? I don't know. Is it a mile, a quarter of a mile, a block?
Probably about five blocks. I'm about two blocks further north than the ladies were.
Thank you. That's it. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carol Squires, and I live at 9685 Elkhorn Road, and I'm not too far from this lady. And I moved into the RMP for the purpose of the RMP, and I totally oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Barbara Manning. I live at 6970 North Jensen in the county. I am opposed to this. When I moved out there, I moved out because it was rural preservation, and we liked the fact that there was acreage, there was room, and we knew that we weren't going to have a lot of tract homes coming in or a lot of commercial development. With all the building and all the growth that's gone on around there, we're kind of being squeezed out. And there is a sufficient amount of retail space that's already existing in the area, so it's not necessary to bring additional commercial in there, especially when it's going to be just within blocks from our homes. And that does hurt our property value.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Ron Holman. I'm at 9665 Elkhorn. I'm also a former supermarket owner. They're planning to put a supermarket in there? It ain't going to fly. They have too much competition. You're talking an Albertsons, a Smith, and a Sam's Club. That size store cannot compete, price-wise or anything else. I mean, it's just simple logic. Why anybody would even do that, I don't know. But we did studies, I'm from the Midwest, on where a feasible store can be. This isn't feasible. He can't make it. I wish him all the luck if he could do it, but he isn't going to be able to do it. He cannot match prices with the big boys. And that's what we got. The big boys are all within, let's exaggerate it, two and a half miles. Why would they go to him when they can go to the big boys and get it cheaper? I recommend you turn this down.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak for or against this? Anybody who spoke, forget something, want to give 10 seconds, come back. If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant. Mr. Fiorentino, let me. Oh, excuse me. Okay.
I took it by accident. Would you like it back?
Yeah, please.
It's always good to share information.
I'll give it to you after the hearing. I just need to point at it.
Mine's prettier.
Yours is prettier.
Well, we may get a Kinko's in there.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, I'm happy to respond to any of those that you need me to or deem appropriate. Just a couple of points that I do want to highlight. There is no question, based on the map that we just took off, and you can even see it on the one that I used, that along the Durango Corridor and further to the east along the US-95 corridor, there is a substantial amount of commercial, some of it's existing and some of it is just planned. In fact, this is the nearest grocery store here. To the best of my knowledge, that's about two miles or so by car. It's less by bird, but this is a Smith's Shopping Center. The only other grocery store that I'm aware of is a couple miles further north of that side on Durango, there's an Albertsons. We submit to you, though, that one of the potential benefits of our project is to actually lessen some of the impact on the people who will be, from the people who will be needing grocery stores on this rural neighborhood. So almost everybody who spoke to you tonight on our map is in this area or further north. This is Elkhorn here. This is planned as a 100-foot right-of-way on your master plan of streets and highways. Providence is unquestionably going to have a great deal of people living in it, and is already does today, and so will the Kyle Canyon Project. It seems to me that it is potentially beneficial to the folks who live in this RMP to have those people who are otherwise going home to or from work to utilize the commercial services here, get in and off, and go home, rather than to cut through the heart of their RMP to get to Durango, which is their only other choice, which is part of the reason why I think this application is appropriate. It is also true that whatever occurs in the county, and I have, I am not handling anything to do with the project in the county, it will by definition buffer whatever the county approves or doesn't approve, the folks who currently exist from this site. Deer Springs, we have submitted all along, and I understand and respect the neighbors' position that they don't agree with this, but we have submitted all along that Deer Springs is the line, and that it makes sense to plan things differently on the south side of Deer Springs than you do on the north side of Deer Springs, and this aerial shows you why. They live north of Deer Springs. There will be other residential north of Deer Springs. And south of Deer Springs, you have entirely different uses if you go in this direction. You have schools and apartments and many storage facilities and other commercial uses. So we think Deer Springs creates a pretty good line. It is also true that the county has vacated Huwalapi. I don't, I'm not sure if it's this section or further south, but Huwalapi will not, people going north on Huwalapi will not be able to get onto the 215. That is not the argument that I was making to you. The argument I was making to you is north of 215, it is going, where it actually does impact the neighbors, it is going to carry substantial amounts of traffic, because it connects two interchanges, on the north, US-95 and Horse, and on the south, 215. So even though it, you can't get onto the 215 from Huwalapi here, Huwalapi is going to carry substantial amounts of traffic, regardless of what we do on our side. So unless you have further questions, I'm happy to end there and respond to anything that you have.
Thank you very much. Questions, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments from the board?
I'll speak up.
Mr. Donovan.
I have to tell you that I know I've had lots of lively conversation with Lisa and Michelle, and I got your email, by the way, Michelle, where are you? Anyway, and I'm glad Bobby said her name is Barbara, because I've known her for 20 years as Bobby. And Mr. Lemon, I saw your letter, and honestly, I don't care whether you're city residences or county residences. It doesn't matter to me. We're all out there. That's just a demographic line or a line of demarcation, whatever you want to call it. But looking at this from a global perspective, I mean, we're on an interstate, 215 and 100 foot right-of-way, and Mr. Fiorentino was correct, it's going to connect up to 95. So if I don't, and I have a hard time understanding where the people west of Huwalapi are going to shop. They're actually going to shop a mile and a half east of Huwalapi and roughly a mile north of the 215. So when they get off the freeway and shop and go home, they're going to be traveling east on whatever right-of-way there is, probably past your houses, and they're not going to go south again, get on the freeway and get off a mile and a half. So I think maybe in the global perspective, this thing works, because it has the commercial at a major interchange. I don't know what else you would, where else you would want to put commercial. So I'm really, honestly, I'm torn between this, from what you're telling me and looking at it from a travel perspective, west of Huwalapi. Nobody's, nobody here is going to be adjacent to it. We're all within a minimum of a quarter mile away, 1,000 feet, 1,320 feet. So I just, if it's not commercial, it's probably going to be exactly what's across the street from it, which was three-story, either condos or apartments. I don't remember exactly what that was. So I don't, I just don't think it's going to be residential adjacent to the freeway there. So I'm kind of torn between it, but honestly, from the big picture, it's a perfect place if you take a look at it from the 215 and 100-foot right-of-way and a connector to 95. So.
Mr. Truesdale.
You know, this is a tough question for everyone. I mean, I know the residents that are out here and watching all of the history of Town Center, the freeways, the high schools, and we, we're a community that goes through an array of compromises on plans where we say, this isn't ever going to be here, but the reality is the market, people. reality is the market, people want services. I know that people have a real concern about this center and what's going to be in there, but I, there will be a grocery store there if there's a grocery store user, and there will be retail experts that will be making decisions to put those there. Every one of the people that will live in Providence, the people that are there, it's good to say you want to drive to Town Square, which is a regional facility, and I understand staff's concerns, but neighborhoods are neighborhoods, and services within the neighborhoods need to be addressed. So, this is difficult, and we wind up with some unrelated parcels that get carved out of things, we deal with the water pumping station that's east of there, we deal with school sites. The community needs all of these things to function and keep everyone happy within their services, but I've heard a lot of the discussion over many years as projects have come into the Northwest, that we don't want the services, but yet, those services are successful because there is a need for them. So, it is a tough decision. The one thing I do want to say is, Nusalvi has done a phenomenal amount of research, and I wish I had some people in my office that could do that kind of research on the real estate market, because she really has identified, there are vacancies, there is surplus retail in various nodes in the Northwest, but that is like schools, you know, you build them, they grow into it, the market, you're building to serve the market. So, this is a very difficult thing. I think the applicant has done some things very well, and like any of you out there, there's some things that, you know, I wish were different about a development, but it's not always my decision that affects each little detail, because I think the neighbors really have had a lot of input on what they were concerned about here. So, I, it's a difficult decision, there's no question.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat some of the things that have already been said, but I must go on record recognizing that if the depressed street can't result in a flood control problem, because in order to get it approved, it'll have to go through the Public Works people and they'll review that. I think their proposal to depress the streets there so that the line of sight is not negatively affected at all by what's being built on the property, with the double layers of landscaping, the additional wall between the street and the development, it kind of addresses that, which is an ongoing problem, that made it go away by working with the residents in the area. I think that the proposal does provide a buffer between 215 and whatever the county is going to permit there on the parcels immediately to the north of this proposal. I think that they have done an outstanding job of presenting an architectural style that is compatible with the area and is very attractive and will be a nice visual addition. If we're going to have a shopping area there, this is a premier location. The fact that there's less signage than is permissible, that there's more landscaping than is required, makes me look at this project fairly favorably, all things considered.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Quinn?
I had the privilege to drive with Commissioner Steinman out to this area after meeting with you, sir, and I felt like I was in a different town. I didn't even realize the growth had gone beyond way out there, and I felt really sad to see all those beautiful two-acre parcels and the horses and all that stuff, and I feel like you are being squeezed out. And unfortunately, this project fits that area simply because it's the way the growth is going, and it's difficult for me to vote against anybody with a two-acre horse property. I know what it feels like, and it's breaking my heart to support you, Mark, but I am because I feel in my heart that it's the right place, it's the right time, I just never thought I would see it in my day.
Any more questions, comments?
The only comment I want to make, actually. Everybody has done, said it well, but when you build a shopping center, you build it because the rooftops are available. The tenants are driven by rooftops. They're not going to go there until there are enough rooftops to support their business. It's somewhat shocking to say that there's going to be 8,000, nearly 8,000 units in Providence. We're not, it's not Summerland size, but it's getting there. And this, I hate the word squeezed, but it's surrounded that's happening to your two-acre, one-acre sites over there. And it's, those people, and you included, believe it or not, need a place to shop and not have to go down to Durango where there's going to be a mass of people. Yes, there are vacancies on Durango and so on, but if you remember, two to three years ago, there was nothing on Durango. It came that quick, and it will not fill up that quick, and it's going to be even slower now that the economy has taken a little turn and we're not building the houses and the rooftops that we did. And I'll assure you, if they get this approved through City Council, I'm not sure when they'll actually start construction, because they do need the rooftops available before they open to know that they're going to get the business. So, I'm going to support this, because I think at that location, right at the freeway, it is proper. Any place up there north of that, it would not be proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I too think this is a difficult decision, but, you know, what else do you put off of an exit of a freeway? If we try to go with a residential product in there, you've got to buffer it enough through sound walls and freeway walls to quiet the neighborhood, and, you know, it's just, I think this developer's gone beyond the call of duty in the planning. And I was at a seminar the other day, and I won't be leaguer it, but it was the Urban Land Institute, and we had a couple of distinguished folks on the panel, one of the gentlemen who actually developed the Summerland was there, Mr. Van Epp, and a couple of other folks, but they talked, and they had a couple of guests from Salt Lake City, Utah, where they had the same issue too. And what it all boiled down to was long-term vision and planning, and neighbors being able to sit down with developers and plan the necessary area so that it will sustain the development for the long term, not only from the developer standpoint, but more importantly, from the homeowners. So, I think what I've seen in here with double rows of trees and all the other amenities that have been put in here, I think he's gone beyond the call of duty. We won't know until years out how it is, but I do think he's done all the due diligence to be able to put a development here that, number one, aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, but yet, provides that safe haven for the residents too. And I don't think it's going to be a blight now and in the future. And as far as what happens on the county's side of the street, I think if this sets a precedent, I think we've set a high bar for them to maintain on that side of the street and would hope that folks would hold it if this item is approved. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion on item 18.
I'll make a motion. Attend item number 18, ZON 25758, move for approval, subject to condition.
Motion on the floor on item 18 for approval.
No, that's not the one where we do it. It's the next one.
On 19.
Commissioners Dunham and Truesdale, your votes stand registered?
I lost the page I needed to read.
Mr. Truesdale, and that motion has passed?
Item 19? 19 is SDR 2576, move for approval, subject to conditions as stated, and a modification of, I think, condition 19.
That's correct.
That is correct, and I'd like to read that in for us. If I may?
Thank you.
Bart Anderson, Public Works. Please modify condition 19 to read as follows. Provide public sewer stubs to all not-apart parcels not adjacent to existing public street right-of-way, and grant appropriate public sewer easements, however, subject to notarized written approval from the owner of assessor's parcel number 12519301010, which is currently entitled within Clark County as a cell tower site with no need for sewer service. The requirement to provide a public sewer stub to this parcel shall not be enforced, provided that an appropriate sewer easement acceptable to the Collection Systems Planning Section is granted connecting this parcel to existing public sewer. Coordinate with the Collection Systems Planning Section of the Department of Public Works and comply with their recommendations prior to the submittal of construction drawings or the approval of a map subdividing this site.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Motion on the floor for approval with amended to the condition is read in by Public Works, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Item 20?
Item number 20, VAC 25759, move for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval, item 20, please cast your votes. That motion has passed.
And these three matters will go forward to the City Council at their meeting of April 16th.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Items 21 through 25 are related. Right after these items, we will take about a 10-minute break. Item 21, ZON 25776, applicant exceed properties, owner exceed properties LLC. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the general plan designation, and staff recommends approval of that request. However, on the remainder of the applications, the variance for the step-back, the special use permit for the airport overlay, the special use permit for mixed use, and the site plan, staff finds that the massing and scale of the development is inconsistent with the residential neighborhood immediately adjacent to it, and recommends denial of those applications.
Thank you, and let me go ahead and read these in for the record. Item 21 is a request for rezoning from a RPD 25 residential plan unit development, 25 units per acre, and R1 single-family residential to C1 limited commercial adjacent to the east side of Sixth Street approximately 360 feet north of Sahara Avenue. Item 22 is a variance, VAR 25778, applicant exceed properties, request for a variance to allow no setback where a one-to-one racial setback to the height ratio is required along a street classified as collector or larger for a proposed mixed-use development. Item 23, SUP 25775, applicant exceed properties, request for a special use permit for a 500-foot building in an AO airport overlay district where height limitation is 175 feet. Item 24, SUP 25779, applicant exceed properties, request for a special use permit for a proposed mixed-use development. Item 25, SDR 25773, applicant exceed properties, request for a site development plan for a proposed 43-story mixed-use development including 1,105 residential units and 179,860 square feet of commercial uses with a waiver of residential adjacency requirements to allow a 101-foot setback where 1,500 feet is required, and waivers of a perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow zero-foot buffer along a portion of the north property line and five feet along the east property line where eight feet is required.
Good evening, Chairman.
Applicant?
Commissioners. Todd Pesavano at 3783 Barrowwood Drive, with Foxcorn Incorporated representing the applicant. What I'd like to do is present the neighborhood meeting information that I spoke with approximately two months ago, and the neighborhood's support petitions. We've had numerous meetings with the neighborhood, the first one being in December, where we sent out 1,574 notices. We had 53 attendants, 26 left comment cards. Upon the 26, we approximately had 38% support, 19% support with concerns, and 27% opposed. After that meeting, we held another meeting January 29th. We had 981 notices mailed out, 28 attended. We were shorthanded, we only collected three comment cards, and of course, all three opposed the project, 100% proposal. We made significant changes based on the comments we received from those two meetings. We held another meeting on March 4th. We again sent out 981 notices. We had 55-plus attendees, 45 left comment cards. We had 43, 44% support, approximately 47 opposed, and three undecided. So, I'd like to go ahead and submit this information for the record.
Please give it to the clerk.
And additional support for the project that was submitted after the meeting. In addition, during some of the changes that we made, we lowered the tower, and we've also received an FAA determination of no hazard to the air navigational system or navigational space, so I'd like to submit that.
Please submit it to the clerk. Madam clerk?
And upon that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Richardson with advance.
Thank you.
Evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Richardson, EVNA Architects, 900 South Pavilion Center Drive. Chairman McGoyens, I agree with you, if there was any place that I would rather be tonight, it would be at the Rebel game, so. What I'd like to do is I would like to sort of, of course, familiarize you guys with the project and location. We are right at the corner, northeast corner of Sahara and Sixth Street, shown here in the red boundary. Run through this, run through the site plan here for you. So, north is going to the left on your monitor there. What we've got here, this is a ground floor. We've got essentially on the ground floor, primarily retail, restaurant lease space, and some back-house functions ancillary to the project, which I guess I should state, it is a true mixed-use project, mixture of residential, office lease, and again, retail restaurant. So, down on this ground floor, we have 36, about 36,000 square feet of retail and restaurant lease. Going up within the project, you've got three levels of office that are contained within this area, and then above that is, of course, the residential portions.
Excuse me, could you point out where Sahara Avenue is on there?
Sure. Sahara is here.
Thank you.
And Sixth Street is here.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Run through the, as Todd mentioned, we've done these neighborhood meetings, we've made some significant strides, we feel, in meeting the concerns of the neighbors. Originally, back in November 27th, the plans that we had drawn up were for a development consisting of about 1,105 total residential units, which I believe is what the applications state. It was a 500-foot tall tower with intermediate heights at about 270 feet and 160 feet. The lowest portion of any part of the building was at 110 feet, and that was the podium level, all parking and office space, that sort of function contained within that 110-foot podium. In that plan, there was about 180,000 square feet of commercial, and that was a mixture of office space and retail restaurant as well, about 2,400 parking spaces. And some, a significant thing to point out was that all of our access points in that original plan were coming directly off of Sixth Street. So, what we've got today is we've got a proposed development of, again, mixed use, 676 units, so we've knocked it down just nearly about half, and that would be the worst-case scenario. What we've got shown on the plans are studios in one-bedroom units. Of course, if the developer were to decide to go to two-bedroom units, that number would decrease. So, we've got a worst-case scenario with the number of units and the parking allowed for that. We're at a 425-foot height maximum, which is the highest portion of the roof elements, in which I'll show you... portion of the roof elements, which I'll show you on the elevations here. This here is the Sahara frontage right here, and again, four-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to the top of the roof, and about three-hundred-and-ninety-five feet to the top of the last occupiable floor. The podium heights are now sort of, or the mean of the project, or the, the base of the project is at sixty-five feet on this portion here, reducing down to twenty feet as you go north within the project. Intermediate heights at a hundred-and-seventy-five feet, a hundred-and-thirty-five feet, stepping down, of course, to the north, as shown on the elevation. We've got the, uh, commercial lease spaces down from the a hundred-and-eighty-thousand originally, uh, submitted, down to a hundred-and-eight-thousand, which consists of thirty-six-thousand, again, on the, uh, ground floor, and then seventy-two-thousand square feet of, uh, commercial office space within the project. Parking impact is down a thousand parking spaces. We're down to about fourteen-hundred parking spaces required. And then again, as far as how, uh, traffic flow comes to the project, we've got a shared-access easement coming off of one of these infamous, uh, commercial drives that pull off of, uh, off of Sahara here. We're, um, suggesting as part of this development to, correct, thank you, um, improve that, bring it up to, um, beautify it, possibly bring it up to city code, city standards as far as curb and gutter and, and all that. Right now, it's just, uh, pavement. So primarily, full-time residents, full-time tenants, employees, um, of either the office, the retail, or the residential portion itself, all the residents would enter the project here. This thing's on, right? To gated access right here, and then they would pull into, residential would pull into here, into garage that would go down subterranean. Office and retail employees would drive up this ramp, which would go into parking that would be located within the podium in this area. Any visitors to the project, uh, people visiting the, the people that live there, uh, shopping at, at the retail, um, showing up for meetings at the offices, or going to the restaurant, would pull into this single access point that we've got on Sixth Street, um, either self-park or pull around. There would be valet that would take them down to their appropriate parking, down in the, uh, subterranean parking as well. We've got a perimeter service drive here. This would be, this, uh, curb cut or driveway onto Sahara would be egress only. That would be, um, anybody that would be leaving the property, uh, residences, full-time employees such, would either leave back down the service drive that they came, or down this service drive, dumping directly onto Sahara again. Uh, and then service as well, trash pickup, uh, deliveries would come in that same way, exit the same way. This, uh, driveway entrance over here is actually only crash gate, and that would be for fire emergency access only, and that would be an egress-only point. Go back to the elevation here. Actually, I want to, before I go there, I want to speak to sort of the, the adjacent land uses, what we've got in place. I've blown up a portion of you guys' southeast sector, sector map, and, um, as you can see here along Sahara, our property is here, outlined in blue. Um, you've got a general commercial land use designation. Up here in the pink is, of course, your service commercial. Our zoning of, request of C-one, um, meets, meets the intent of that service commercial. What we're, what we're trying to do is, it's not necessarily, uh, something that's completely out of place across Sahara in the county. Uh, it's all tourist commercial. Um, our property, it's very small, but, uh, is essentially right here, and it, which is the, the boundary between tourist commercial within the county and, and their general commercial designation. Um, incidentally, across the street on Sahara, just approved at Board of County Commissions, there was a six-tower, five-hundred-foot, uh, four-ninety-foot, um, mixed-use project as well. Uh, I've got a perspective view here, couple of perspective views, actually. This top one is a view from the residential, uh, residences across Sixth Street looking south towards the project. Again, you can see we've, we've thrown in that, um, proposed development across Sahara in the background there, so you can see that, uh, and really, you're only seeing three of the six towers that they've got proposed and approved over there. Um, so what we, you know, what we're showing is typical residential is about a twenty-foot, uh, setback and landscaping buffer there along the frontage. Bring that site plan back up. One of the things I forgot to touch on, uh, forty-foot, we've set back the building forty-foot, not only just building setback, but beautifully landscaped along the frontage, and what we've done along Sahara is we've tried to mimic the, uh, the guidelines that you guys have set forth within the downtown centennial, um, I believe, uh, Las Vegas Boulevard South, uh, guidelines for east-west streets in anticipation of, um, just to the west of us, of course, is, um, there's a, a gaming overlay over there. If, if things were to further develop down Sahara, um, we would, of course, um, be in, uh, in conformance with, with the pedestrian nature that would be developed within that project. This other view here is something that I believe, um, Vice Chairman Trobridge requested was a view looking down from the tower over the project and sort of into the neighborhood. One of the things that I noticed that it sort of begins to demonstrate is, uh, the closest neighbors to the north, which incidentally are over five-hundred feet away as, sort of, as crow flies, um, uh, we've got a, I'm sorry.
So that would be neighbors on, is that St. Louis to the north?
Uh, correct. Well, this is, there's, there's a cul-de-sac there.
It should be, okay.
Let's go back to the site plan, the aerial, actually.
We're good, keep going.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We've got a six-foot-high perimeter screen wall and, and twenty-foot trees on center, and they pretty much do the job of, of screening, and this is from essentially the highest portion of the tower, so it would be the worst-case scenario. Screens the privacy of, of those neighbors' backyards. With that, I wanted to just quickly touch on, we're aware of and, and try and work with, again, we've worked, tried to work with the neighbors, but we're aware of and try to work within the confines of the Beverly South Ridge Neighborhood Plan. Specifically, of course, um, the biggest one that everybody's going to be touching on, I'm sure, is, um, the residential adjacency and building heights. As I said earlier, we had steps down in the building, um, but in all reality, this, this red line represents the required three-to-one residential adjacency setback coming from the north, those neighbors to the north. The project that we originally had, the heights were up around, I think the, the lowest portion, like I said, was about at a hundred-and-sixty. What we've done is we've brought essentially ninety percent of the project, give or take, I suppose, um, of the project underneath of that three-to-one setback line. And really where it conflicts in the, on the tower, it's directly adjacent to, uh, commercial uses and directly across the street from commercial uses. So we feel that, uh, the majority, like I said, the majority of the project con, uh, conforms with the strategy of the neighborhood plan's intent of, uh, residential adjacency setback, which says that, uh, any building whose foundation is within three-hundred feet of a property zone for a single-family be required to adhere to that residential adjacency standard, which is, of course, is stricter than what the code says. Poorly maintained streets, private streets, speaking about those drives, again, off of Sahara, that all those commercial, uh, drives that are part of the, um, redevelopment area. Um, again, like I stated earlier, we would look to beautify the, the, the private drive that we would be utilizing, that we have, uh, shared access with. Touching on Sahara redevelopment, um, the corner parcel, which is about three acres, uh, where the Marie Callenders and Tony Roma's and, uh, Kappa Hattelberg and, uh, that retail center, is within the city's redevelopment area. Again, what we're proposing here is a true definition of mixed-use, um, and is, is definitely in keeping with the, uh, urban goals of the redevelopment area. Uh, one of the other strategies within the Beverly, um, South Ridge Neighborhood Plan is the issue of vacant lots. As a part of this development on the north end, um, we're actually incorporating a couple of the vacant lots, so I, I feel that, uh, we're helping to, to get rid of that blight issue within the area and within the neighborhood. And then also, um, the project is also in support of traffic issues that are outlined within the, uh, neighborhood plan and specifically about cut-through traffic. We've tried to, in dealing, and in all honesty, until it was brought up to us by the neighbors, um, we had, we had a horrible, horrible plan as far as, um, the access points all coming off of Sixth Street, and thankfully, I, I can stand up here and say that we've got a better solution. We have deterred as much as possible within our project, um, the traffic from going down Sixth Street by putting them directly back out onto Sahara. With all that-
Is there bus turnout on Sahara?
There is a bus turnout on Sahara, we've provided, and then also, um, I failed to mention, but, uh, right-of-way requested that we provide in addition ten-foot right-of-way for the future widening of Sahara to, to deal with those traffic issues as well. So with all that being said, we just, we respectfully request your support on this project.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Those four that gets the item, please come forward. I see some familiar faces, so I guess you know the routine.
Yes.
Thank you.
John Delikonakis, I live at five-forty-eight Barber Way. I'm also the Vice President of the Beverly Green Neighborhood Association. Um, I respectfully request that the application be denied in all its respects for a number of reasons. First and foremost, it does not comport with the neighborhood plan, as your planning staff has already told you. The density and scope of the project is completely incompatible. It doesn't take a genius to see it. It's a very nice building. I applaud their efforts to meet with the neighbors, but the fact of the matter is, even in its most modified form, it is of such a monumental nature, it should not be abutting, single-family homes. This planning commission of the City Council has repeatedly stated, it's the desire of the city to have a core of residents living in the center of the city. I think this neighborhood has demonstrated over and over again that it is that core. Now, if the planning commission and the city going forward decide that that is not desirable, then go ahead, approve this plan, because this particular building is the tip of the iceberg. I mean, the applicant has already stated that since we are in a gaming overlay district, and if the property to the west of us becomes a casino, well, he forgot to mention, the property to the west of the project are single-family homes. So at some point, the planning commission and the city have to make a determination. Do they want Beverly Green South Ridge and that quadrant to remain residential, or are they going to expand the scope of operations, high-rises going north along Las Vegas Boulevard? This isn't even on Las Vegas Boulevard. I mean, this, this is on Sixth Street. So if they're contemplating a project, and you give approval for a project of this scope, this far down Sahara, you've basically given the signal to developers that it's okay to then fill in the rest of the area between Sixth Street and Paradise, or Sixth Street and Sahara with this type of development. But I don't think that's what the planning commission has contemplated in the past, and I don't think it's what the City Council's contemplated in the past. So this project is just simply too big, too dense, uh, unrealistic for the area for a bunch of single-family homes. I mean, I could sit here and nitpick about small items, but one thing that caught my eye just in the last presentation, and I'll bring this up, is the service road that goes around, claiming that all entrances will go on Sixth Street. We'll take a look at that service road, and if you've ever driven down Sahara, you're going to know, is you're coming out of that building, if it's ever been built, you're not going to go out back onto Sahara and only be able to make a right-hand turn. What you're going to do is you're going around the service road, come onto Sixth, and so you'll have all this increased traffic, no matter what they've done because of that service road, going up and down single-family homes on Sixth. It's just not the type of project that's compatible with a group of single-family homes, and for that reason, I respectfully request that you deny this application in its entirety, including the commercial zoning, uh, request. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trueside.
Is it possible for staff to clarify? I heard something. There is no gaming overlay west of Sixth Street, as I understand it. The gaming overlay is-
It's immediately surrounding the area where Las Vegas and Sahara intersect, so there is some on both sides of Las Vegas Boulevard.
Right.
But it does not extend to the residential property.
Nowhere close to Sixth Street. I, I just wanted to clarify that, because I, I didn't want anybody to, something on the record say that there's some, you know, gaming opportunity here that doesn't exist because there's single-family homes.
Yeah, Chairman, if, if I may. To answer that question, it's, uh, the gaming, the gaming overlay district is really fifteen-hundred feet from the center line of Las Vegas Boulevard all the way until St. Louis. Does that make sense?
North and south.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Gregory Brown, I live at six-oh-six Bonita. I wanna, before I talk briefly about the petition, then I'm gonna present, just clarify a few things about the location. As, uh, John Delikonakis pointed out, immediately to the west of the proposed project is, as you can see on, um, the photograph, the aerial photograph, uh, several blocks, about six blocks that cover, uh, close to a half-mile of single-family residential, and the closest single-family residential to the project is immediately to the west, literally across the street, across Sixth Street, which is sixty feet away. Just want to clarify that. The, um, presentation I want to make is, is generally on behalf of a lot of the neighbors. Like many of the neighbors who live in this neighborhood, we've long tried to encourage smart development that serves our neighborhood and improves it, and for that reason, for instance, three years ago, we met with this very developer to discuss a medium-density project that they, this developer was looking to build on the vacant lot that he owns. At that time, we were very enthusiastic about it, because it was a very medium-density, and the footprint was very limited. This project, which they, um, contacted us about, in fact, contacted me as an individual about, um, after their original public meeting, has never really been a medium-density or limited footprint. We've met with them, I've personally been on the phone with them many hours, and we have set up meetings with neighbors, as well as attended all the public meetings, and our message has always been consistent, to not only be consistent with the neighborhood plan in terms of adjacency standards and step-backs, but also that this has got to be a project that will enhance the quality of life in the neighborhood, be consistent with a longstanding single-family residential low-density neighborhood, and not overwhelm it. The improvements that they've made have come from the input of, uh, many of my neighbors, and I think that what's clear is that we've been consistent that the density of both the residential as well as the commercial is simply too great, the height is simply too great to put on a street that is a street of single-family residential homes. And the point that I want to make on is not that I think that this is far too dense for this location, but that residents do. The map that I'm going to submit as part of the petition, which, I apologize, is not very clearly reproduced on the screen, but what it shows is the placement of those neighbors that we talked to within the notification zone. We took the initiative after their third and final public presentation of going to talk to as many of the neighbors in the notification zone as we could, and what we got was an overwhelming response of opposition because it was simply incompatible. What the map will show are a series of blue dots, about sixty households where a resident living within the neighborhood was opposed. There was a very small degree of support. There are two red dots, which are households that were supporting it, and that support, like the support that, um, Chris and Todd talked about, primarily comes from people who are business owners or property owners, I'll finish in just one minute, property owners who have a very different vision of the neighborhood. Many of those who did say that they supported the project said, "This whole neighborhood should go commercial." That's a very different vision from the existing plan. That's not the plan that this project should be compared to, and in fact, because we're looking at an existing land use plan that is based upon a single-family residential neighborhood, I think this project and all the signatories of this petition that I'll now submit, think it's simply too big and too dense for the existing neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Happy St. Pat's, top of the morning to you. My name is Lynn Tyne, and I live at twenty-two sixteen South Sixth Street. Uh, I also represent thirty-six of the adjacent neighbors that live, and we're the closest neighbors to this project. We live exactly across the street from it. Uh, the, uh, meetings we had with the developers were pretty evasive. They've never really done the traffic studies on this, as they said. Uh, they're, we're directly across from the valet entrance. They said that's for visitors. Well, it's six-hundred-and-eighty-five units. I think there's going to be a lot of visitors, plus shopping centers, commercial lease space and, and everything else. There's going to be a lot of visitors, there's also- There's going to be a lot of visitors, there's also going to be a lot of the residents using the valet, probably the handicap will be using them. So there's a lot of people, and there's a lot of traffic. Another one of my concerns is it's a historical neighborhood, this street is where Liberace and Elvis lived, and they're placing this huge building in the middle of that. We are not against progress, let me let you know that we are not against progress in our neighborhood. Across the street from us is a vacant lot, we'd love something there. Maybe another shopping center, maybe some small apartment complex, maybe a school or something else, but not this huge building that is way too dense and way too huge to be right across the street from us, not to mention they'll block my morning sun, and all our mature landscaping will die. One of my concerns also is the kids in the neighborhood, this is a very loaded with children's neighborhood. We have three schools, we've got Trinity School, John C. Fremont High School, and John S. Park Elementary School. There are children all day going back and forth to school, and they cross many streets. Well, with all this excess traffic, it's going to be very dangerous for the children in the neighborhood. And many of them are the teenagers that don't have somebody walking in the school. Some of them are walking with their moms, but most of them are walking by themselves. So it's very dangerous out there. We received many evasive answers from the developers when we tried to ask them things. They went round and round in circles. It sounds to me like they don't even have the money. They're saying that they've got it filled up. These are penthouse suites that cost $600,000 and up, and they're saying, "Oh, they'll be shopping for us." None of our neighbors can afford to go shopping there, most likely. It's in their own neighborhood, it's like this big monstrosity in the middle of a nice neighborhood. So I am definitely opposed to this, and I hope that you turn it down and vote it down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Swank, I live at 546 Barber Way. I walked Sixth Street, Beverly, Van Patten, the streets immediately to the west of this project. I knocked on every single door, spoke to every resident I could, I found exactly one who favored the project, again, hoping that someone would, in her words, buy her out. Every single other resident to a person was opposed to the project, they don't want it there, and my concern is that this will severely and negatively impact the neighborhood. This will hurt the viability of the neighborhood, in that the houses become less desirable. The substantial beautification project that the city's done just north of this, on St. Louis, has really helped bring stability to the area. We have more owners living, occupying their residence there than we did previously, and it's only been there a very short time. This would have an opposite effect, and, you know, to some measure, throw away the efforts and money that the city put into this neighborhood. It's a long-established, substantial neighborhood, we have at least one resident here who's lived here since her house was built 50 years ago, give or take. It's not hit by the kind of bankruptcies, or for-sale problems, or the housing price drop declines that some parts of the valley have seen, and this is the last thing that we need. In that, I only want to conclude by saying that, let me find my points here, we've met with them repeatedly, I appreciate the work they've done, but the project is simply too large for the neighborhood, and would jeopardize a substantial portion of the neighborhood. Thank you very much. I request that you deny this.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Reed, I live at 548 Canosa Avenue. I won't reiterate all the points my neighbors have made so far, but I am totally opposed to this. This structure is just out of place in our community, it's too big. The traffic impact on Sixth Street, whether or not they say it's all going to go out to Sahara, anyone exiting onto Sahara who intends to go south is going to immediately turn into Sixth for a direct route right up to Charleston. Or, they're going to go into Sixth and take the newly narrowed St. Louis back to Maryland Parkway, going past two schools, a park, and a pool. The traffic impact on Sixth and St. Louis cannot be denied, and I just feel the whole structure is totally out of place. Thank you.
Thank you. We've also read your letter, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Phyllis Silvestri, I live at 610 Canosa, which is two blocks from this proposed building. I feel the traffic would be unbelievable, and it's a little residential area with about five schools right on the same street on St. Louis, which all have schools for little children. It would be tragic, and you've been very kind to fix up St. Louis, and we appreciate it immensely, and it's a nice little two-lane street, and we're very appreciative of your efforts to do that. Certainly, the traffic of building like this building would be too much for us. Thank you, and I hope you deny it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Gentlemen Commissioners, my name is Lance Kirk, I live at 1060 Griffith Avenue. I am the President of West Hunt Ridge Neighborhood Association, just to the north of South Ridge, although I am here on behalf of myself. I just want to echo all the speakers before me, what they've said. I'm in agreement with that, I want to bring one item to note. I believe that Sixth Street from north of Sahara, if you allow that commercial to go in there, will just slowly creep in commercial down Sixth Street, all the way to St. Louis, because nobody will really want to live there. I mean, this is similar to what's happened all along Eastern, all along Maryland, streets like that, Pecos, that they were once residential, became commercial, so I just want to make note of that, that it's one of those things where you wouldn't really allow R1 zoning in Sahara, so having commercial come down Sixth would be the same. So I respectfully ask for denial for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Stephen Schomusch, I live at 2019 Beverly Way, which is one street over, right next door to the Lutheran Church. I do have one concern, which is the traffic, of course. If the builders can put something one block over, aside from that, I'm actually in favor of this project, and I'll tell you why. I live right next door to a church, and my main concern is the homeless problem. And there is a lot of homeless that are in this area, they've been pushed up. Pastor Lauren lives right next door, he doesn't really want them to go away, because he's a man of God, and I don't want everybody right there. I've had people breaking into the back of my house, and resulted this, calling the police, and a lot of them not showing up. Now that Sixth Street is one of the main throughways, unfortunately, it's kind of a good/bad thing. I don't like that there's so many people and so many cars coming through, however, a lot more police have been coming through. A lot more of the homeless is, as much as I feel for them, they're not right there. And on top of it, I live, like I said, one block over, it's like a transitioning part from St. Louis to Sahara, beyond that, little bigger houses, a little bit nicer. But we're all trying to make everything a little bit nicer, fixing up the yards and so forth. I feel that this project will jump-start everything. I feel it's going to bring up property values, bring other people in. I've asked other people from where I used to work, "Would you like to come and live in this area?" And they say yes. Very nice neighborhood, very extremely close to the strip, large backyards, but fortunately, we need a little bit more shot in the arm as far as cleaning up, and I think this will jump-start it. I do feel for my neighbors, too, I do have concerns about the traffic, too dense, like, I'm not really familiar with these kinds of things, but I do feel it's a good project to come in and start jump-starting, fixing up the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jack Levine at 1818 Eighth Place. For 10 years ago, all the buzz of Las Vegas was about the suburbs, and the growth, and the whatever, and we were encouraged by the City Councilman and by the mayor, and bring people back downtown. What we need is people living downtown, all right? Lots of people living downtown. And what we've always done as a city is, we've always jumped from, gee, we have great single-family homes, let's clean them all up, to big, massive developments. And we never do anything, we rarely do anything in between. And this would have been an ideal project for projects like Loctane, or projects like Jewel, mid-rise, medium-density projects, would be a great thing for this piece of property. But this is so massive, and everything that my neighbors have said is so much true, but now there's momentum, and now there's talk, and now there's energy, and there's synergy of people coming back downtown, with gas prices the way they are. What we need is working people, families back downtown again. Leave the tourists on the strip, that's who's going to end up in this high-rise building, all right? I don't believe for a minute that anybody that's working in Las Vegas is going to end up owning or renting one of these condos. And we're going to end up with another vacant, empty tower, that's my biggest fear. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Ms. Thomas?
Joanie L. Thomas, 1509 South, Fifth Place. I'm the Vice President of the John S. Park Neighborhood, but speaking on my own behalf today. I certainly support the comments the neighbors have said, I don't want to repeat anything. I am especially concerned about this zoning change request. I don't think this project's real. We've been doing this, I've lost track of how many years now, I think four, five. We've seen proposal after proposal, pretty drawings, but no real particulars, just has that same feel. I think it's simply another effort to flip the property after a zoning change, and if this is rezoned to a commercial zoning, there's no guarantee of traffic, inlays and outlays, and other things that have been promised in this project. They're not conditions of a zoning change, and we could be stuck with a lot of uses that would be really, really incompatible with the entire downtown historic area. I think the commercial zoning is incompatible with the neighborhood, and urge you to vote against it, as well as the other proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Malloy, and I live on 1404 South Sixth Street. My neighbors, for the most part, have made the points that I would like to, so I would just like to say that I'm opposed to the project, and I hope that you will deny the request.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Tick Sagerblum, I'm the Assemblyman for this area, District 9, and based upon my knowledge of the area, and my knowledge of the residents, I would urge you to go with the staff's recommendation and deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I read your letter as well.
My name is Annette Marcus. I have lived in the Beverly-Green tract for 50 years, and this is an historical area. And I see Sixth Street as a detriment to that area. There are children who go to school, and I'm sure there are going to be children in that apartment house, and it's going to be devastating to the schools. There are three schools, the Trinity School, the John C. Fremont School, and the John S. Park Elementary School. If we are going to keep this an historical neighborhood, I think that this project is detrimental to the area, and I am opposed to it most vehemently. I don't think it's going to help our area one bit.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jessica Brown, I live at 606 Bonita. I don't want to reiterate what everyone else has said, I just would like to make the point that I've talked with about 30 of our neighbors. Every single one of them wants development, wants smart development, but they all feel that this is too dense and too tall for this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Pam Hartley, 1700 Rexford. I helped put together, I was one of many people who helped put together the Beverly-Green South Ridge Neighborhood Plan. Two streets were identified as extremely vulnerable to commercial encroachment. One was Sixth Street, and the other was St. Louis Parkway. With the help of Councilman Reese, and a commitment from the City of Las Vegas, there was a beautification project that has anchored that St. Louis as a residential street, and I would like to see continued development, or good development along Sahara, but not commercial encroachment on Sixth Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Leonard Ferris, and my daughter Tanya's back there, and we're the owners of the Cafe Hutterberg. And we represent some of the retail that are in that area. We've been, of course, as you know, Cafe Hutterberg's been there, probably 1970, Marie Counters, Tony Romans. What happens when a high-rise development like this does, and I believe in Las Vegas is only maybe 10%, 20% of them ever get built? The landlords stop leases. Right now, we're in a 15, in the last five years of a 15-year lease, we cannot get our lease renewed. Tony Romans are the rest. But what happens when you have anchors in ourselves? We begin to leave. And who's going to come into a business like that and put that kind of investment into it, and not go on a month-to-month rent? So until you make this, when you make this approval, you've just destroyed all those retail businesses, they have to leave. And when they leave, they'll be boarded up. Now it might take four years or five years, we're in a little economic slump. I can't imagine a billion dollars, and where that money is going to come from, unless it's coming from Dubai, or some area. Where are these people getting this money to put it up, when you give the approval? You'll have destroyed all those businesses. And I'd like to have you think about this, from the retail, and of course, the sympathy we have with our residents. And our customers are probably 50, 60 years or older, 80% of them, been coming there for 30 years, and they're not going to park four stories down below a building to go up and buy a sack of sausages and go back down. They won't come in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
That was interesting. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. What Mr. Lance Kirk didn't mention is that he's the past president of the local AIA chapter, and he was instrumental in getting this sustained building lectures at UNLV. The next ones, by the way, will be on the 3rd and the 21st of April.
And New Year's.
And I'm surprised that he didn't encourage you to get over. But in those lectures, we had several people that preached on urban design and planning. This is in my ward, I don't care if it's built or not here, but what I would really like to see, if these people don't want it, that he builds this thing at Lower Fremont or Stewart, because we would love to have this in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions and comments from the board?
You know, this is an interesting project, and it is a historic area. You know, the lady mentioned Liberace, and some of these other things, and we need to embrace the history and stuff. There's one item here, this is the parking lot that is very near and dear to Frank Lefty Rosenthal, and we should maintain that historical character, too. But on a serious note, the density of the project, and the intensity of the project, and the traffic, isn't the issue that I think is the critical issue here? Because we can build, and we can expect developers to build super-quality projects, and we don't have to make them 38, 40, 50, 60 stories tall. You can put 600 units in a 10-story building, still get the same density that these gentlemen need to make their economics work. But I'm not sure they've listened to the neighbors as much as they purported they have listened to the neighbors, so that concerns me. Is the developer of this project currently, previously built this type of intense project, and has the financial wherewithal to do these kind of projects? We've heard a thousand projects come through here, this billionaire, that billionaire, 15 billionaires, 20 billion, and there is nothing but a webpage and a prayer to build these projects. And these neighbors actually have a legitimate concern. They don't want a lot boarded up, planned to be here 10, 15 years from now, because that's how we wind up having, continually having infill properties that are just left fallow while we build to the suburbs. We need to infill our city, and we need to compete for better projects, and that doesn't mean the next tallest, biggest on the, as a residence. There's no, you've got probably half the units that are sold out there have never had people spend the night in them practically. So convince me what is different about this project, and that's what I think the neighbors should be presented, before we make a long-term decision that will displace countless numbers of retailers, impact R1 real estate. It is a redevelopment area, it is important, we need these opportunities, but how many long-term residents have to pay the price to get there?
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think the project is, they've made a lot of concessions and have come up with a nice-looking product. The only objection I have to it as it remains is simply its location. You know, I always ask myself the question, if I owned one of those homes across the street on Sixth Avenue, would I be happy with this being built across the street from me? And the answer is clearly no. I think that it would be best if you would take this project and move it on the west side of Las Vegas Boulevard, north of Sahara, and that's an area that we want this type of development. We want to concentrate the high-rise structures in that area. To allow this type of development on, by Sixth and Sahara simply allows significant, a significant project to be developed far away from where we want it, and it just kind of discourages people from going into the area where it's intended to go. So I would encourage you to move it and continue the hard work you've done with this foot appears to be an excellent project in the wrong location.
More questions or comments by any of the Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Didn't know whether you wanted the applicants to respond, or you were just seeking our, because I-
I'll ask for a response once we close the public hearing, but-
Do you want me to comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
As eloquent as always.
Well, I don't know about that. I think the only good thing about this process is that it brings about people together and they coalesce over common concerns. I know the majority of the people that spoke against this, and just the, I saw an architect, a Realtor, three attorneys, a professor, an artist, and at least two teachers. This is the population of that neighborhood. All the things that the city has requested, the vision that we want to create, this is the neighborhood, this is the revitalization of the downtown area. Where my concern is, because I think that neighborhood, the Beverly Green, Southridge Neighborhood, the John S. Park, my neighborhood, Mary Crest, Hunt Ridge, et cetera, they're all doing just fine, but we have to battle, and I think that's the problem. The process is so flawed. I know that a few years ago, and I don't know whether it was this applicant, one of the Commissioners indicated it was the same developer, or someone mentioned that, someone came forward with the neighborhood, and I know they had discussions about a more modest project, an eight, six, eight-story project on the vacant site. I think that's a perfect place for something. It's, everybody that I've talked to in the neighborhood is very passionate in the belief that they want development, that they want good development. They want development that would help foster the goals of their neighborhood, not detract from it. And that's really the issue that I think is before us. Somehow, this process is broken down. I know you've had three neighborhood meetings, at least. There have been several changes to the plan, and I think you've modified it and reduced it, and for that, I'm real thankful. But I think that maybe you might have began the process backwards, that perhaps you should have met with the people who are most affected by it and tried to do some kind of a needs assessment about what the neighbors can live with and how you can pencil out a project. And that's where I think this process is broken down. There's a lot of, a level of mistrust that really doesn't need to exist. And unfortunately, and I know from having seen these same people come up here for the last seven years, they got to spend their evenings, they got to find babysitters, and they got to spend their night at the planning commission or their day at the city council, because it's fight, fight, fight. And quite frankly, I think this commission, some other members of this commission who are no longer here, and our city council and our mayor approved the Beverly Green Southridge Neighborhood Plan. Now that is a guidance document, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's written in stone, but we all said, this is what we want to happen in this neighborhood. And the first thing I would think a developer would do is look to that document and say, how can we build something that will meet our financial needs and make us a boatload of money and still respect the wishes and the spirit of this document that people have voted on and agreed to? So right there, I think this thing is flawed. As a matter of full disclosure, I met with Senator Bryan and Trevor Hayes with the law firm, along with a fellow Commissioner. If there is anybody who is a mouthpiece and who is convincing and who could best represent a project, it would be he. And I got to tell you, I was real candid with him where I thought that this project was flawed. So from that perspective, I'm disappointed. I do have some questions. I'm not sure that they really merit a discussion, but there's been some talk about whether or not these would be rental units versus condos. We all know the situation with the market, I'm not an expert, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to address that. But I had issues about if they're rentals, is there been an assessment of the school district, the Clark County School District, and whether or not that would provide increased students for the already cramped schools? But when I'm told that they're studio and one-bedroom units, I would, leads me to believe there probably wouldn't be a lot of kids, but then I heard somebody say something about if we build two-bedroom units, so that would be a concern as well. Again, I do appreciate attempts at mitigating this to make it more palatable. The traffic issues, I think you've resolved to some degree, but one of the, I think it was Mr. Delacanakis, very eloquently said that the density and scope is just too intense. And I don't know how anybody can disagree with that statement. We want development, and I recognize that part of this is in the redevelopment area. But whether this project gets built or does not get built, my first concern was what happens to the Heidelberg Cafe, Marie Callender's, and Tony Roma's, and everything else in that small aging strip mall. It could use a little bit of help, but the reality is, they're restaurants that you don't have to traipse through a casino to go to, and they feed that neighborhood. They feed my neighborhood. And those will go away. If you tell me that you'll sign new leases with them, there's at least a two-year build-out for this project. They're empty in the build-out process. If you phase the development of it, you still have some concerns, and now I'm hearing that you're not going to sign leases. What do we need to do as a community to ensure that we have a livable community? This neighborhood is as good as it gets in terms of what we want for the vision of our downtown. And yet, at every step of the way, it seems like we want to suck the very vitality out of the community that we're so striving to, you know, to make more livable. So, I mean, the density is too, and scope is too intense, which is what Mr. Delacanakis said, and the staff findings about residential adjacency standards, it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the setbacks, and it, in my opinion, it's not harmonious to the area. And our site development plan review process requires that there be harmony, and I certainly haven't seen any. But I want to say one final thing, and that is, when you guys who are developers are beginning this, as Commissioner Truesdale said, you know, wide-eyed expectations, you know, everybody with a website and a quarter of an acre and a dream wants to do a skyscraper. And how many of them have we seen come out of the ground? I don't know if you're billionaires, I mean, we had Ivana Trump up here, so whether these things get built or they don't get built, whether they're flipped or not, I think the process needs to change. You need to sit down with the stakeholders, and specifically the neighbors, and figure out what can work best for everyone. And then they're coming here in support of the project and saying, yay, this is going to be terrific for our neighborhood, not coming down over and over and over again to fight the process. So I really encourage you, you got to change the way we do business, and I think this project is just way, way, way too intense with lots of unintended consequences, and it will not see my support. And I thank my neighbors for coming here yet again, giving up another evening to fight for what you so proudly and strongly believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Quinn?
Briefly, because I don't want to repeat what everyone said here, but I had the good sense to call Commissioner Evans and ask him if I could sit in on the meeting with him and Senator Bryan and his cohort, and it was kind of hard for me to look at Senator Bryan and be as candid as Commissioner Evans, I just kept agreeing with him. Sorry.
On everything?
I'm getting better, but it was a little difficult. But my father, I grew up on St. Louis and Burnham, and I lived there for many years, went to St. Anne's and Bishop Gorman, and the last place my father could remember to drive was up St. Louis, make a left on Sixth to get to your restaurant for German food, to get to Tony Roma's for ribs, and to get to Marie Callender's for a little pie. And as he lost his mind little by little, when I look at all of these neighbors, I see just a little bit of my dad in each of you, and it would just be against everything I believe in to support this, because it is definitely a part of what we have to remind ourselves that we can't lose. This place belongs somewhere, and it's a wonderful project, but it doesn't belong in a place where all of these people and many of us have called home for so many years. So you will not see my support on this street.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments, just wanted to chime in. I like, I like the product. I think your visionary's looking out into what will probably happen to this corridor, and I think, again, I'll go back to the meeting I had a couple of days at the Land Institute, and one of the first things they said was to get everybody together. And just like Commissioner Evans just ran down a list of the neighbors that were here, from teachers to real estate, to lawyers, to just regular folks in the neighborhood, I don't see where that synergy happened at the meeting. And I think that's where we're here now. And I've heard over and over from the neighbors, we're not getting quite the story, we ask the tough questions, but we don't get the answer. And so I think at these meetings, as candid as the neighborhood's going to be about their feelings, you've got to be as candid about your product as well. And some of these things have to stop looking at the bottom line. Am I going to make a billion, 800 million, 500 million? You've got to have some compatibility with the neighborhood, because once it's in the ground, it's there for the long haul, and I don't see that. I like it, I can, I can support it, but I'm going to tell you now, I'm going to listen to this neighborhood and what they, what they, what they have to say. Thank you. So with that, we'll have rebuttal from the applicants?
Could we make a few comments? That'd be great.
You surely can.
My name is Greg Trapani, and I'm the President of Xcede International. I appreciate all the comments that are made, and I also have to say, I also appreciate the neighbors. Little concerned when I hear, though, that we were not dealing straight with them. We would answer any question anybody has tonight or at any other time. So that does concern me. I think that we have come here and come to all those meetings to try to understand what everybody would like, at the same time, doing what everybody likes, you know, it's got to be a give and take also, and so what we attempted to do was to give and to take. We understood the traffic was a major issue, and quite frankly, without the neighbors' help, we wouldn't have what we think is a much better plan today. We do have a traffic study, and I heard earlier that we didn't, but we definitely have a traffic study. I think we have that submitted, and I think that all you have probably seen that. So again, that, that major issue, I think that both our architects and with the input from, from the neighbors, I think, I think is a really good plan. When it comes to, we were talking about marketing and the finance, I don't know how else to say this, but the company that I work for is, is very, very well-to-do. We are here to build this project, we're not here just to come up in front of you and have the neighbors come out. We're real. I mean, that's why I'm here. I mean, I've flown in today just to be here tonight, and, you know, I don't like flying around the country just to, to come in front of groups and, you know, I could do, I could do this at home. It is a very important project to us. This is our number-one project that we have. We have owned property here for three or four years. We have talked about other projects before. We really felt at the end of the day that this project we are presenting today to you is a better project than what we, we were doing two and three years ago. You know, last time we were, when we had this other project and we talked about 10-story or 8-story buildings, we were all the way on the north side, and we had a 10- or 12-story building all the way to the north. But what we've done now is we've teared this thing back and to load everything onto Sahara to try to get it as far away from the neighbors as possible, feeling that we were lessening the impact to them. In all the things that we do back in Chicago and that we're doing in Tampa, you know, the land is being eaten up, and by going, by going vertical, that's where we're going to end up being. I mean, where I'm at, the Chicagoland area and Wisconsin area, I mean, our farm fields are getting just eaten up and eaten up and eaten up, and someday, you know, we got to take a real hard look at what we're doing there, because, you know, the corn, the wheat, the whole bit, we're eating that up. We, we're going to have to go vertical as this population grows. We really believe that what we've brought to you tonight is something that is very responsible. We, we, you know, these are our neighbors, and I can honestly say, we want to, we'd love to have them all come up here and say, boy, it's a great thing. We have, we have honestly gone through, and I think that Greg Brown and the rest of the guys out there, I would be shocked if they didn't walk up here and tell you that we have made a lot of changes to the better for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed Vance, Ed Vance and Associates, I'm the architect on the project, I think I need to give my address here, 900 South Pavilion Center Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89144. I don't envy you, Commissioners, at all. It takes you a great deal of time to get your arms around a project of this size and scale and, and in a neighborhood like this. And again, I've been before you many times. I just came from another neighborhood meeting, and it was, it was fun, because I had the neighborhood support, it was great. We had, we have had three neighborhood meetings, and for all intents and purposes, we had just about a 50/50 split for those who went for the project and those against. We have listened to these neighbors, we've incorporated a great deal into this project. And you're right, when you look at it, it doesn't look like it's going to blend in very well. The Sahara Corridor itself is evolving, and that's my job to look at it when I look at both your side and the county's side, okay? It's never easy without seeing what's being planned. So my job is to look at the macro as well as the micro. And it's a challenge, it's not easy. The setback requirements on this, this site are a labirinto of geometric proportion that only, I think, some of our professors in the math department at UNLV could figure out. We had to lay this thing out and to figure out how to get under the envelope. We've modified that, and we've gotten under it to the extent that the only place we really are sort of not in conformance is right up against Sahara, where we have the highest component, where we could get the density to make the project pencil, and that's in the redevelopment area, so that the Office of Business Development said that seems to be okay. We, we had a great number of individuals from the last neighborhood meeting who were positive, very positive, gave us a great big thumbs up. They didn't come tonight, unfortunately. So we, you've met the developer, I don't like to do work for flippers anymore, I've done enough of that. So I've done my homework, and it's not just a website, I've visited these folks, and they're real, and they plan on building it. The density's okay, Commissioner Truesdale, except that the height's too tall on Sahara. We would like to maybe blend that, you know, lower one and raise it in the other, and I think some of the neighbors have said okay to that, but my, I don't have the supportive planning on that. So that is an option that maybe we could entertain in a little bit here. I did want to mention that, yes, we will be talking about restaurants. I don't want to lose those restaurants in that neighborhood either, I used to have all my Boy Scout meetings there. So at, at, at Marie Callender's, we have some of our neighborhood meetings there, it's a good place, but they are in need of help, and unless development comes along, they're not going to get any better. So we have located in our space three retail operations here, and our job is to get those folks in there. We like those people being there. Our neighbors, our, our residents, they don't need a place to eat. We also have 70,000 square feet of office in this product, this is a live-work situation. So you talk about- So you talk about density, but I hope these people are parking their car and it's a storage unit in the garage, so that they're working, living, and playing here and eating and not really traveling that much. This is also workforce housing. The reason condos are not discussed right now is because rental units seem to be the only way to get things financed. Condos are kind of not in the best of positions to get financing right now. I will be designing this thing in such a way where condos can be converted later, so it will be a high-quality product. But renting a product right now seems to be the way to make something pencil, that's what we're going to have to go with, and that's what Greg's told me that works for him. And I have to believe him. He's the one that has to get the money, and he's done it before. I think development in a neighborhood like this breeds vitality. Now, you talk about some of the retail folks that are going to go away. Well, hopefully, we can incorporate some of them, but we're not going to be incorporating massage parlors in the neighborhood. Let's be perfectly honest, there's some not-so-good stuff there. So when you bring products like this in that raise and elevate the quality of life here, some of those bad seeds kind of go away. I had a security guard in the last office or in the last neighborhood meeting who said, I have to kick the bums off your property all the time. Is this what we want to preserve? We have to ask ourselves some tough questions here. How do you define harmony? That was one of the questions somebody said. This is not harmonious. Across the street, we're going to have 50-story towers. That's on the county side, has nothing to do with you, I understand that. But again, my job is to look at everything. So when I look at this, I'm going, hmm, can I step something up to meet those? So I do have, when I look at the whole corridor, at the end of the day, that's what we're going to have. And you're right, I'd like to shove this up closer to Sahara, which is what we're doing with Allure too. And I know we got approval there because it's the right thing and it's the right place. But that's going to start to feed. It's going to start to lead up and down, which is why the Office of Business Development made that a redevelopment area. So we've kind of done a 3D model. I don't know if you've ever seen any kind of presentation in 3D, but Chris, you're going to have to man that thing because I don't know how to do that. So can you see this on the, you're going to have to lay it down flat. Okay? But that's the projects that are now across the road, that are now approved by the county.
Can you point to the screen where they are, Mr. Rich?
All right. They're in the red. And there's quite a few. And you guys have no comment, you can't comment on that. Unfortunately, you have no approval. Neighbors can't really talk about it.
You're talking about in the county across Sahara, right?
That's correct. So we're looking directly east, ladies and gentlemen.
Would that be either commercial center area or would that be north of or west of the commercial center?
It is west of commercial center.
Right.
It's at the corner of Sahara and State specifically.
What is the next view that you showed?
Oh, we had another still view of it looking as we're coming, like if we're coming from the neighborhood.
This view here is specifically the view from their towers over the project, which is similar to the view that I showed you earlier from this tower here. The argument of privacy, it's a pretty similar situation to what's been approved in place.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you're talking about across the street and up the street, not across Sixth Street.
No, it's across Sahara.
Yeah, across Sahara.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I mean, with all respect, one, it's the county, and two, it's a very different location. I guess I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I appreciate you mitigating some of the, basically reducing the height by half, but I want to go on record as saying something. When I talk about the process is flawed, you started with 70-some stories with all of the access being on Sixth Street. Now, I know you're an architect, and I'm not a great mathematician, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that 1,400 parking spaces coming and going off a Sixth Street, a primary residential street, is problematic.
Are you looking at the current plan?
No, I'm saying, now you're talking about 1,400 spaces. I'm just, what I'm saying is that you began this project with what I think very little dialogue with the people most impacted by it. And you've reduced it to make it more palatable, but it's still, in my mind, and I'm the one that pushes the button here, it's not harmonious. And I don't know how you can suggest that 30, what is it, 32 stories and 660?
670.
Units across the street from a single-family home on Sixth Street is necessarily harmonious. So, I mean, I'm not hearing anybody say they don't want development there. What I'm hearing is that it's too intense, it's too dense, and I would remind you that you guys have the burden of proof. You're the one asking for a zone change, for two special use permits, for a site development review. You're the one that's asking for everything over and beyond and different than what our code allows. So you have a burden to prove that you meet all the standards and that your project is going to be compatible. And I'm just telling you, in my mind, it's not. My suggestion, though, was that you began the process flawed. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Evans, you got it all out?
He's got it. He's got it.
Well, I could go on and on, but I don't think we want to get there.
We got it.
Just one comment to what Mr. Evans said, and then I'll ask for a motion. But I think sometimes it's kind of a little unfair when we look at, from a planning perspective, I hear a lot of people saying this is going to bring undue traffic and all of that. What brings the traffic here is the 7,000 folks a month that move in here and the 100 cars a day we get on the streets. Where I think the process failed at some point was the, what we don't talk a lot about is our transportation element and the fact that the adequate flow of the traffic is not in here. So that, to me, to say that all these developments are going to bring all this unwarranted, it's not the developer. We need to look at, a building like that, I think, would encourage folks to take mass transit, to push up and down the boulevards like Sahara. But I think part of this is a transportation issue that overburdens our street and causes folks to cut through. I can tell you right now, when traffic backs up on Sahara, those folks that sit there idling, they cut right down Sixth Street right now, and there's no development there. So whether this is here or not, that cut through is still going to continue down the street. So I think at some point, you have to start looking at transit and how traffic flows to alleviate a lot of that stuff.
That's really excellent. I'm so glad you said that because we provided the bus stop. We're right across from the street from the Monorail station. We are trying to make a live-work station. I don't think anybody has done a successful live-work project in this town for us to really have an understanding of what this, when you say intense, it's like, well, what's intense? We don't have any idea yet here. People look at it and they see the number of units, but when you really see the dynamic model, if it were really built and investigated and to find out how it works, you might find that people are working and living here, as I said before, and really not clogging up the road at all. A lot of people can live and work here or even walk to work or catch that bus. And we're trying to make workforce housing here, people that live and want to live close to where they work. Nobody's doing that. And here's the first time we've had an opportunity to do something for a developer, to kind of do something. And everybody talks about this Manhattanization. Nobody's been able to really pull it off. And so here's the first chance we can really do something close to it. And I understand that it's tall. I understand that.
Mr. Vance, you talk about workforce housing. No one seems to give any price points, but everybody wants to say it's $700,000 for a unit or a one-bedroom. I don't consider that workforce housing.
You know, what I want to tell you is that if I had a chance to meet with you at another time, I could show you a product that I'm working with. And I think I mentioned this earlier, that can bring the construction cost of a project like this down to around $250 a square foot, the price point drops. And it's modularity that really makes.
It's not this project that I'm concerned about, it's the location.
I understand.
I love this project if it were across the street and west. I've been arguing that you need vertical development, but there are places where it's appropriate and places it's not. And as a professional architect, if I could give anybody some advice, when a developer comes to you, particularly out of state, and says, we want to build something somewhere and it's within these neighborhood groups, the first thing I would do is take the dust off the shelf of the South Ridge Beverly Green John S. Park neighborhood plans and say, what can we do to make this palatable and fit within the plan? And then meet with the people, you know, to maybe modify it. That's got to be the first step, not the last step. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you. All comments are completed. I'll entertain a motion on item 21.
Well, my motion would be to, the staff is recommending approval of this, and my motion would be for denial because I think they really all fall into place. I believe that this area could be rezoned, but it would not be my motion at this time. I think the rezoning calls for, from, if someone can help me here, I think it's from, from what to what?
R1 to C1.
From what?
RPD 25 and R1 to C1 is the proposal.
So my motion would be for denial. I think that's too intense.
And that motion for denial has passed.
And on agenda item number 22, I believe, which is the variance, I would agree with the staff recommendation. I believe that, I believe the staff is recommending denial of that, is that correct?
Yes.
My motion would be to follow their recommendation for denial.
That motion has passed. Item 23?
Item 23, the SUP for the, I can't read my own.
The SUP 25775?
Right. For a 500-foot building in the AO and airport, et cetera.
That is correct.
My motion would be follow recommendation of the staff for denial.
Item 24, that motion has passed for denial.
Item 24, the other special use permit, 25779. Once again, my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for denial.
Please cast your votes. Item 24, that motion for denial has passed. Item 25, SDR.
And finally, with the site development review, I would reiterate that I don't think, given the testimony of the people here this evening and in consideration of the staff report, I don't find it to be harmonious, and I would agree with the staff and follow their recommendation for denial.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And all items go forward to the city council at their April 16th meeting.
I just wanted to tell the applicants, just don't give up, just meet with the neighbors. I know we've been with them from gorillas on side of buildings to everything else, so they're very in tune to what's happening in the area. Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break. In case anybody's interested, the UNLV Rebels did win tonight. The final score was 89 to 88, close game. 10-minute break.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
We've never been here since we've been here.
We didn't realize.
This is our first time.
Change for the cars.
Yeah, I like it.
I apologize.
I got the door open.
I want to be interested in your comments.
After wrap, I was going to get home. Grab a snack on the sack.
We got a fire again about nine.
I can go put money in.
I know where you're going.
No, I'm good.
Don't you need to wait, sir?
He's going to do my eyes.
I ran out of quarters.
I thought if they, when they do let us up there, if you want to state your name and address.
Excuse me. Hi, on the zoning, on first issue, you know, the chairman voted for it.
Friend and discuss what you wanted. Thought you were getting a port to share up the end of the road. We drew the plan and submitted it, and until I think what to do the job, you didn't know. No one knew, you didn't know. Situation. So that's what I just want to present. I think that's what I said. Given the fact that there are others in the neighborhood who want to share up, 25-foot that back already. And we have no neighbors proposed, and we have immediate neighbors are in favor.
What church?
I have no idea. I can tell it's the old place.
How was the wedding?
Well, it was.
Weather was perfect. It was a busy day.
You had a good house?
No, they had a good chapel. They were very busy because apparently everybody else wanted to get married. So they had brides light up to the street.
Really?
There was four others standing around there waiting while we were there.
Did Cassia, did she send you an announcement?
Yes, yeah, I sent her a card, but, you know, I've been going in so many directions.
Oh, no, I just wondered. I never ever asked her if she ever.
It's really cute. Nice picture.
Thanks. I'm not sure that's a blessing.
No.
All it's done is make trouble.
Yeah, yeah. The funny thing is, my mother had two daughters, me and my sister. No, they liked her more than, you know, and she hated her older one, so she didn't like them. And I was not, you know, a ball-baiting child, you know, but ten years later, my sister came. Golden girls, blue eyes, that's cute, it's a button. I had to help him. I started, my father had my baby, so I decided to keep somebody that I wanted. My sister was told, well, no, I always wanted to birth and leave everything. My sister was told, you're so beautiful, you'll marry her.
Turn into a princess.
Oh, she's got her husband, four, never learned.
My wife's brother's wife, first wife, is exactly like her. She thought she was a princess, and she expected it all to happen.
My sister did too. I'm so beautiful, you know? And me, I had to work for it. My, when my older guy, he, I think, my father, I was always, my father, oil is, you know what the lotus is called? This is my photograph. She bought him one at 18. I wanted. I wanted five-sixty. I need my son. No, no, yes, relax. He's twenty years younger than I am. He's so important, and I should have never bought that, I should have never bought that. Eight weeks, I get my money. Can you just tie me over for eight weeks? It'd be two years ago. He has not bought it.
He used to be spoiled.
Yes, and he demands it. And I mentioned the other day, I said, you know, I can't do it.
And we got it, we got it, we got it.
I bought it, I mean, I was, I was, I was, I was, you know, those houses are all coming down. I think he almost bought it, almost bought it, and Michael's house.
Oh, I mean, that's the price that it goes for now.
No, that's where you bought it, like three ninety or something. You, you, you know, oh, I don't like it. I want a marble floor, and you guys, I don't know how much you guys charge, but, you know, it wasn't cheap, you know?
No.
Yeah, hey, what do you have there? You know, you know, you have to have a door there. I don't like to hear, you know, she's twenty-four, she's never had a date, and you know what you do, you know, all the time, that's all the time, she gets all the information, and he has somebody in Germany who writes stuff. She has a, she is an A student, and they're cheating on me because my.
Yeah, you can't cheat every time. I'm not saying cheating, I mean, you know, avoiding.
No, 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 it is cheating. No, it is cheating.
Avoiding, you gotta meet that head on, because it's gonna like you.
You know, it's cheating, you know, and she's like, she's so, she's so smart, she's a great A student, I mean, straight A student. I look, I look at her and say, what, it is all good. Yeah, it's pretty good. So, he ate there. And that's when you say, you know, if they're too pretty, things come easy, and they, you know, they're idols.
Yeah, that's kind of sad.
Yeah, and I see it as, my sister was that, my brother, my mom. Now, I have a brother who I, we're here. And we have a brother-in-law. That's why I was pointing. I was just, they should take these quickies early. No, I think this.
Thirty-two, we're thirty-two, I'm running low.
No, no, thirty-five, thirty-five, and then, then we want to get some lunch.
I, I don't think there's a problem, giving, I mean, judging by what you're saying.
Hey, is that tires? And are we, are we in tires?
Maybe it's a blessing.
Yeah. Now, this is a picture.
We drive by, it's not the one you want. This is the one, this is the original, that's the one that I, we bought. This is the one that shows, shows in right in the middle of the driveway. This is the one I showed.
Okay.
All right.
Actually, this is, this is not there.
Don't say anything about that. As far as I know, see thirty feet, you got thirty feet from there to there. As far as I can tell, that's the one.
Yeah, well, you can argue that, you know, I will admit that I made a mistake in not asking you.
Just let him do it, and you never really looked at the plan.
Right, yeah, well, assuming he can do it.
He didn't, didn't make it clear that it wasn't going to go all the way out to the end of the driveway like you did.
Now. They're trying. He, he was.
You don't want to spend all this money on this.
No, no.
Yeah.
Now, this is a picture.
If we drive by, it's not the one you want. This is the one, this is the original, that's the one that I, we bought. This is the one that shows, shows in right in the middle of the driveway. This is the one I showed.
Okay.
All right.
Actually, this is, this is not there.
Don't say anything about that. As far as I know, see thirty feet, you got thirty feet from there to there. As far as I can tell, that's the one.
Yeah, well, you can argue that, you know, I will admit that I made a mistake in not asking you.
Just let him do it, and you never really looked at the plan.
Right, yeah, well, assuming he can do it.
He didn't, didn't make it clear that it wasn't going to go all the way out to the end of the driveway like you did.
Now. They're trying. He, he was.
You don't want to spend all this money on this.
No, no.
Good.
Yeah, good, good, one minute.
Yeah, I was trying to start.
You're, you're good to tend the tea now, put up.
Yeah.
Copy the paper, you see.
The only thing, I wish I had, you know, thank you, I wish we would have brought pictures of each other. One about a quarter from you, that's thirty-five feet, plus the other one, just to show that we're keeping. Because we don't have any verification of that.
No.
Well, it seems that this meeting, they, it's up to their, them taking work on this show, so. You don't, can't show us these others, it confuses you.
Okay, we'll forget it.
We weren't prepared enough.
But next time, I'll go by myself. Should serve snacks, if you'd like. Donuts or something. Well.
Ripple, gomorrah, gomorrah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to present, Director?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to begin the second half. We're going to start with Item Twenty-nine, S U P two-five-one-three-one. I will be abstaining on this item. Thank you. This is Item Number Twenty-nine. It's a re-notification of a special use permit, twenty-five-one-thirty-one. Special use permit, public hearing. The applicant is Mountain View Estates, the owner is Shun Won Han and Yoon Jo Han. It's a request for a special use permit for a proposed forty-foot-high, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premises sign at fifteen-fifty West Okee Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Staff would note that this application has been amended to a fifty-five-foot sign, and that this change has been properly re-notified. The sign appears to comply with the zoning ordinance, and staff recommends approval. Additionally, staff notes that the sign is very close to the minimum three-hundred-foot separation from other off-premises signs, and a condition of approval has been included, which requires the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the separation requirement by providing a survey, which has been stamped by an engineer or surveyor prior to the issuance of a permit.
Thank you. Applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Mike McDonald, Alpha Omega Strategies, Forty-Nine O A Carman Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. First of all, we'd like to take this opportunity to, to thank staff and the director. This has been a long process, and we apologize for that, and it is wonderful to work with staff, but I'm prejudiced because this is where I'm from. But, again, wonderful job, staff. Thank you very much. And we, we look forward to their, their recommendation, and we hope that we've worked through the, some of the concerns that this board had. First one was the, the placement of the, of the board with possible cut-through traffic that could endanger the, the public. And when we went back to, to replace it, Mr. Henry, also with Alpha Omega Strategies, met with several of the board members to show where the placement was going to be. A couple of them met onsite to show where the new placement would be. The only concern, when we placed the billboard, and it will actually act as a buffer to the propane tank, so it'll actually become a public safety barrier billboard. So, the, the billboard itself right now, the reason we had to raise it, if, we can go to the other bit, please? I apologize for the black and white. Doesn't know anything. Okay, well, that's the billboard. Got a little better? We had it at the original height, the sign and the, and the palm trees were in the way. That's where we came back and asked for the variance at the last meeting on St. Valentine's Day. That's how it'll look. It will run the, the length of any, in reference of any other billboards. We meet in compliance with restrictions governed by the state. We will not be interfering with them, so respectfully, we ask for your, your blessing on this.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone.
If I may just clarify something while the speakers come up.
Okay.
There is not a variance. The, the fifty-five-feet height is allowed with the S U P. What we needed to do was re-notify so that we had the proper height in the notification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. My problem with this is that it's just an ordinary billboard, and if they want special consideration, they need to go beyond the pale. I mean, we need neon, we need the, the tri-rotating things, L E D, whatever. But what I'm looking at is just a plain old billboard, and, and I got a problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion.
I, we have beat this poor application to death unless there's something pressing and everybody's, that a question we haven't answered. I, I'll make a motion for approval. Somebody's staff.
Please proceed.
And if I may, condition number two, I'd like to add that the conformance to the minimum requirements, et cetera, and the site plan dated February fifth, oh eight.
Your motion's been made with an amended condition.
You agree?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, I, we agree.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post, motion carries.
With Chairman going abstaining, and that goes forward, the S U P for City Council on April sixteenth.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'd say one thing, I'd like to wish everybody Happy St. Patty's Day, and there's a young man watching tonight, Little Dave. He's a resident of the city, and he's watching this board religiously. He has to do a report on it tomorrow for, for the, I believe, St. Anne's and, and their con, their congregation, so. You're being watched tonight by one of your faithful constituents.
Right. If you were to shut us up, we've got one.
That's right.
I hope he doesn't write how mean Mr. Evans is.
Item thirty, I, I failed to put on the record I abstained because I had a contract with the applicant in another jurisdiction, so I just wanted to put that on there. Item thirty, S D R two-five, two-five-three, applicant owner, International Church of Las Vegas, request for site development plan review for eight existing modular buildings and an outside storage area for an existing church at eighty-one-hundred West Clip. Staff?
The applicant submitted revised plans to the planning department today. Those revisions included a relocation of food storage container from its current location in a drainage easement south of Silver Sky Avenue to an area southeast of Building H. The elevation drawings were revised to show a stucco finish applied to the side of the modular buildings. So, if the commission is inclined to recommend approval of this application, condition number four will need to be revised to reflect a date stamp of three thirteen oh eight. However, staff finds that the continued use of modular buildings on this site is not compatible with adjacent residential properties and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman, and Director Wheeler. My name is Ron Portero, seven-nine-five-eight Lookout Rock Circle. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, International Church of Las Vegas, which is also my home church, and I'm a volunteer and member of the church. If you recall, we were here before you on the twenty-fourth of January, and since that time, I will tell you, have been very, very proactive. We heard you loud and clear in terms of the message you were sending to us and what we needed to do. Just if I may go briefly through the list of things we've engaged in. Number one, the containers, and there were four of them, and I think Commissioner Steinman saw them in the back of the, the property, they're gone, as well as the chain-link fence that was around those. Yeah, they're gone. Also, the wooden shed, that was a subject of some discontent, is gone. The six-by-six container on the west side of our chapel, just outside the fire lane, is also gone. And then, in addition to that, the refrigerated trailer, which was behind the school modular trailers there, we have pulled an application for a permit to relocate that. We're working with staff to find a more suitable location for it, and we are in that process and, and looking for approval from you for a suitable location, working with staff. So, we've been very proactive. In addition to initiating those activities, I would suggest to you that we also met several weeks shortly after that meeting with, with two different architects, looking for their input and their expertise to help us do better planning, and also to take those modular units, and, and the commission that we gave them was to spruce them up and, and give us something to come back to you with, that as you look at what you're going to look at tonight, you're going to see that they don't even look like modular units. And so, we, we looked at also revisiting the previous site plan for a proposed twenty-one-thousand-square-foot church, but we're going to hold on that and do that through another application at another time. Now, I might want to make, if I can, one.
What I may for the applicant, just, the commission does not have copies of your new plans.
Yeah, I, I understand that, yeah.
We can give them to them. So, if you can show them to them, that would be great.
I will. Okay, thank you. If I might, staff's denial, if you look at the staff report at the bottom of page one, was predicated on the fact that we had been previously in for temporary facilities based upon the proposal to build a twenty-one-thousand-square-foot facility back in the year two thousand. Well, we, we couldn't come up with the funds to do that. We had already financed our first major facility. We couldn't come up with the money to do that, but the ministry needs were maintained. And so, what, what we did was, we, we have counseling in the modular, which on the site plan would be identified as.
Can we zoom out on that plan a little bit?
Modular B here. I'm sorry, modular B right here. That is used for counseling offices and also for administrative offices for our staff. The other modulars that we are looking to have go from temporary to permanent would be the school modulars, where we have grades three, four, and five, that support our International Christian Academy. And modular A, we are only asking for one more year extension, and then that goes. And so, we, we definitely know that that, it's a temporary facility, and we're asking that. one, was predicated on the fact that we had been previously in for temporary facilities based upon the proposal to build a twenty-one-thousand-square-foot facility back in the year two thousand. Well, we couldn't come up with the funds to do that. We had already financed our first major facility. We couldn't come up with the money to do that, but the ministry needs were maintained. And so what we did was, we have counseling in the modular, which on the site plan would be identified as-
Can we zoom out on that plan a little bit?
Modular B here. I'm sorry, modular B right here. That is used for counseling offices and also for administrative offices for our staff. The other modulators that we are looking to have go from temporary to permanent would be the school modulators, where we have grades three, four, and five, that support our International Christian Academy. And modular A, we are only asking for one more year extension, and then that goes. And so we definitely know that that, it's a temporary facility, and we're asking that we be granted one year. So our basic request was predicated on staff basically telling us, and if you look at their report, they said, "Well, we're denying you because you're not doing the twenty-one-thousand-square-foot facility." And that was seven years ago, and we couldn't come up with the funding. The problem with that is, things have changed in seven years, and we're now, instead of two thousand people seven years ago, we're four thousand five hundred. We still have tremendous physical facility needs, and these modulators are essential to our continuing operations at the church. Now, let me suggest this to you. Two weeks ago, our architects had submitted plans to you, which, if you look in your packet, were submitted because of deadlines that we had to meet for submittal purposes, but they're really not what we intended and what we thought we needed to do to come in here tonight. What I do have for you, and what I would like to show you are a couple things. First and foremost, if we were to take these modulators and ask for permanent status, we need to do something that would let you understand that what you've seen is not what you're going to get. And first, I'll show you, if I may, a landscape plan. This is the current modular to the east, and that is a landscape 3D image that was done by our landscape consultant, Jeremy Landscapes. And that's the landscape proposal that we would put around that building, Building B.
That's the one that juts out into the parking lot on the east side?
Yes, yeah.
What kind of a surface is on that now?
Asphalt, parking strip.
No, no, the surface of the building.
Stucco.
It is stucco.
Yeah, it is a stucco.
And that's what you're proposing on some of these others. Is that kind of finish?
No. I'm going to show, well, it's a stucco finish, but I'm going to show you some other architecture and relief that we're going to put on there. This would be some of the landscape that you would see on the school modulators, which would be modular C, D, and E. This would be the east elevation, looking west, on the school modulators. Then the other elevation that I'm going to give you is looking, would be our north elevation. And what we want to do is spruce up the landscape between the school modulators and make them look presentable, not only to the people coming and going, but also to our neighbors. But that's not all we intended to do. So we've got this as a plan for a landscape review, but here's what we'd like to do with what currently exists. This modular here, as you see it, and I'd like you to kind of visualize this, that's what it looks like today with the superimposed landscape. This is what we'd like to propose for this modular. And what you will see, we are going to put this fascia up there, it's about a four-foot fascia, which matches our existing administrative building and our chapel. And also, these columns will extend out, and actually, at the end of the day, you will see that this feature, our columns that come down, and at the bottom of this is a stone veneer. And so when you look at what we're attempting to do, we're going to go above and beyond what you see probably ninety-five percent of the classrooms in Clark County and even other private schools are doing with their modulators. And so we heard, again, you very loud, in terms of what you were suggesting was inadequate. And so as we look for a permanent status here, we're saying, "Well, we're going to go above and beyond what everybody else in the valley's doing." And there's a reason for that. Pastor Paul Goulet is our senior pastor. He deeply regrets what happened at the last meeting. And he basically said to the building committee and to the board, "We need to make it right, but not only do we need to make it right, we need to go beyond what's right." And it's my belief, and I think if you look at these elevations and what we're attempting to do in changing these boxes into some very nice-looking facilities with landscaping, we're going beyond what everybody else in the valley's doing, and this is Pastor Paul's desire, to demonstrate to the planning commission and to the council that you were very gracious with us at the last meeting. And so we're going to go way above and beyond and present this to you and ask for your blessing and your recommendation, that these buildings, if we make them look like this, if we work with staff from an aesthetic standpoint, we work with building and safety from a building and safety standpoint, we work with fire and Ozzy and his group, make sure that we're compliant. We need these buildings. We have ministry going on, day in, day out. Our classrooms are there, and the elevations for, by the way, for the school classrooms would be revised, and we would put fascias up at the top of the school classrooms as well. So not only are we talking about revising and upgrading the box on the east end of the facility, we're also talking about upgrading the school classrooms. And then when you look at the landscape plan, I think it's a very nice-looking facility, and then all of a sudden, it becomes compatible with our existing buildings. It becomes even more compatible with our other landscape features, and I think it's aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. So with that in mind, this is what we're asking, for these four facilities to become permanent with these changes and upgrades and approvals by code and planning, and that the other modular to the north, we just need one more year to rearrange our administrative facilities, and we'll get rid of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You said these were, plans were submitted today. Did staff, do you guys have time to review them?
Right. Regarding the site plan, it's just a minor change to move the food storage container further to the southeast so that it's screened more from the residential. We didn't have an issue with that. The elevations, they're putting stucco on the modular buildings. That would improve the appearance. We didn't have any issue with that. The landscaping plan is just a photo simulation. There's no, we have that, but there's nothing to condition based on that. I mean, it doesn't show type, spacing, or plant material. So we would, if they want to change the landscaping plan, we would need some kind of formal drawing of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for, against this item, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. They don't have the funds? Okay. If they want to do the landscaping, give them an extension of time, I don't care, five, seven years. But if you leave, let a modular building go, you're going to, about twenty, twenty-five years, that thing is going to look like something the dog drug in. And that's what we don't like, and we should never, ever, it's the same old thing like former Commissioner Quinn says.
I think we're going to hear that before this is over.
I'm sure you will. But still, I mean, if they need an extension of time, that's one thing, but nothing permanent.
Thank you. More speakers, please come up. Applicant, if I could ask you to step back and allow them to occupy both microphones? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I happen to be the president of the HOA that occupies the space right directly west of this particular church, happen to be a member of this church as well.
Name and address for the record, please.
Two-two-eight Star Cluster Circle. My name's Eugenie Reyes.
Thank you.
And-
For or against?
Well, if they relocate the freezer and really pay attention to the people that live in our community, we've been here for fourteen years. I've lived there for thirteen of the fourteen years. And when the school came, and I mean, I remember thinking, "Oh, God, build a church right in my backyard. Great." But the school came along, and during the day, some people in our city work twenty-four hours a day, let's remember this, and some people were greatly disturbed because of the students running back and forth between the modulators. And I will say that they really take an interest in the church and the community over there. They really do. They keep the modulators in very good condition all the time. I'm here this evening because some of my residents are really upset regarding the fact that these refrigeration units are really disturbing to them particularly. Not to me, because where it's located, it doesn't disturb me. And some of the photographs that he's presented here this evening do not really represent where we're at. That refrigeration unit is actually on the west end to the south end of the community, and three of the buildings there are really disturbed by it. And sometimes, we've had in the past situations with the music, because the ministry, the music ministry, goes until eleven o'clock at night. We've had conversations with Pastor Paul, and it seems like these things are easily resolved when they're made aware that it's encroaching upon the residents, our community. But, so that's why I'm here to speak about that this evening. I really believe that the church, I mean, obviously, they reach out to a lot of people. That church hardly had any members when it began, and I don't know that it's even forty-five-hundred. It feels like six thousand some weeks. I mean, really, they really reach out. And the food storage that they have is feeding so many underprivileged people in our city. I really believe in the church, and I think as a general rule, the residents in our community, I don't know if I speak for all of us, we're not especially disturbed by having the church there, having the ministry there, you know, having the playground. They have a lot of community outreach programs for Christmas and Easter and Halloween and things like that. So I think, and as a general rule, we're happy that they're there, I mean, considering all the things that could be placed there. The modulators, as I said, they keep them in good condition. Of course, they're not going to last like a home would, but that's my piece with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael Collins at two-oh-eight Star Cluster Circle, and we're here to talk about something that hasn't even been mentioned, is that they are running a food bank-type project right on our property line. It's inside the fence on their side of the property, but it's only twelve feet from our homeowners association. I brought some pictures to show you what I mean.
What's your address again, Mr. Collins?
Two-oh-eight Star Cluster Circle. And this is our home right here. And this is showing delivery trucks, one unloading and one lined up to unload. This shows another delivery, and these are all taken within the last thirty days. This shows our vehicles and just how close the delivery trucks are to our neighborhood. And this is what the trucks are delivering. This is a food delivery that was made on February nineteenth at about eleven o'clock at night, and that's just a few feet from where we live, and that delivery of food was left there unattended for over twelve hours. When I went out to take pictures of it, there were birds on top of the food, eating it. There's an employee that regularly likes to, there's a big gathering of pigeons in our neighborhood now, which I think Mr. Peterson is going to address, and they have an employee that likes to feed the pigeons, so he breaks open packages of bread and sprinkles crumbs everywhere, which is not what we exactly want in our neighborhood. This is a photo taken out of our bedroom window. It shows the same pile of food that was in the previous picture, and it shows schoolchildren walking past that pile of food, and that's right where the trucks all come and go. And we think it's not going to be a long time till we see a child run over. Again, we applaud their effort for what they're doing with the food bank, but we just wonder, is what they're doing, are we properly zoned for that? And we don't think so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the gentleman, have you talked to the pastor or any of the leadership of the church about how to address some of these issues?
The refrigerated storage box came in about a year, a little more than a year ago.
It came in January ninth.
And as a neighborhood, we, and as a homeowners association, we tried contacting the church to see what that was all about, and we were told that it was temporary because their school kitchen or something, the refrigeration had broken down, and they needed a place to store food. But it seems to us that it's transitioned into a full-scale food bank. We think that there's about, I'd say, average of eight trucks a day come and go, picking up, delivering food. And we're talking, they're using the driveway there that the food is piled up on, isn't really a driveway, it's a storm drain gutter.
I don't want to, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interrupt you, but I guess where I'm going with this is, you, I wasn't sure that I got an answer. You've talked to them or you haven't?
Yes, we have called, they have said it's temporary, it's going away. We have called more and more and more, and they tend to ignore us and not return our calls anymore. So we have called code enforcement and the health department about these matters. Code enforcement told us that they had agreed to remove this refrigerated box by today's date, which hasn't happened. So we really don't know where to go to get this problem resolved, but things aren't as peachy as were portrayed in the first, the classrooms, believe me, are the least of our worries.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm William Peterson, live at two-oh-four Star Cluster Circle. Do you want to leave that last picture out here once? This, the storage unit or freezer unit, whatever they want to call it, is an ocean-going refrigerated pod.
Mr. Peterson, would you put your address on the record, please?
Two-oh-four Star Cluster Circle.
Thank you.
But that is an ocean-going refrigerated pod that they put in a year ago, January ninth. That refrigeration unit faces west, and it runs along the wall, and in front of my door, I believe it was Father, or not Father, but Pastor Tom last year ago, January, I asked him if he would like to come over and have a glass of lemonade on my patio, which he never did, but I could have sat across from my patio table, and he wouldn't have heard me. We had the Summerlin flyovers that, with the noise and so forth, I stand out on my patio, I don't know the planes are coming over because I can't hear them. But it's like a, it's like a tunnel there that just comes right on through an echo chamber. And this morning, I woke up at ten minutes three to look at my clock, and I sat and I listened to that thing until four o'clock when I got up, and I can hear it in my house. They did have a wooden container around it, and I don't know if they took it down, blew down, or whatever, but that thing is absolutely terrible.
Thank you very much.
If I may, Chairman, to clarify the land use issue, the food bank-type of use, if it's for the members of the church, that is part of the church operation. If it's open to the public, then it requires a further permit.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for, against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Applicant, would you like to respond to some of the comments?
If I may, from an operations standpoint, there are people who come and we serve them with food. I'm not particularly tuned in to the daily operations or the obvious, someone dropped food off the night before, I don't think that's a regular occurrence and probably was unauthorized and unsupervised at the time. We usually don't expect deliveries beyond a certain point in the day, and hopefully, that's an anomaly, and that shouldn't happen. But it did, and obviously, we regret that. We have, as part of our application that we have pulled, we are relocating, and we're attempting to relocate that, get it properly permitted to, if you could see my map here.
We can see it?
Yep. Currently, it's located right here, and this is the wall for the neighbors. We are going to take that unit and we are going to place it over here, behind our existing building here, and it will be totally walled in with a decorative block wall. And then it will also be serviced by trucks that could come and drop in there. Now, this is all assuming that we get the appropriate permitting through planning, and if we have to come before this body again, so-
So if you don't-
Then it has to go.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason it's still there since our last meeting, we were told that if we shut it down, the people supplying the food would stop, and we'd never see them again. So it was kind of a, we were in a quandary. We knew we'd be coming back here, we pulled the permit, we didn't want to yank it out of there and have nowhere to put it and have the food supply stop, but we do hear the residents, and they have a very valid point. It needs to go. It can't be there. And so we're moving it, assuming we get the permission to do that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is the city attorney. It's important, it's important that if this were to be approved tonight, that the applicant understand, the commission understand, that this approval of this site plan would not be some implied approval of what may need a separate special use permit. So I want to make sure the commission understands that, the applicant understands that, and the public understands that. He may very well get approval tonight, I'm not sure what you all do, but he may also get the code enforcement folks out there with the notice to comply, based upon what it is the city sees as, as to whether this is a true accessory use to the house of worship or this is something different.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so I guess in closing, I would just say that I think we're trying to do more than what is right by revising our elevations, upgrading our facilities, and as to this refrigerated trailer, if the commission's wish would be to set- And as to this refrigerated trailer, if the commission's wish would be to set that aside as a separate item for review, we're okay with that because we understand there may be some issues that we, we all can identify tonight at this hearing.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Evans?
I just wanted to, before we move further, it, it almost feels like we're at an impasse with a no-win situation in that the gentleman that I asked if they had talked with the church, apparently at some point they had approached each other, but, uh, I'm kind of reluctant to want to, you know, make you keep going back and forth to the drawing board, but yet I, I believe that if you were to sit there and work with the people who are most impacted by this, you might come to some resolution. I mean, I was quite frankly willing to support this until I heard these folks, uh, I mean, you know, they have some very valid concerns and I think you need to do the due diligence to ensure these folks that they're not going to have middle-of-the-night deliveries and then it was an anomaly, but from, from what I'm hearing, it's more, uh, it's more frequent than, than anyone would like. And then the last issue is, you know, the nature of the, of the special use permit. I hate to see you keep going back and back and back, but on the other hand, I'm unwilling to push a green button for yes, where I'm not sure that all the things have been resolved.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the, the neighbors were aware of our need tonight to ask for that refrigerated trailer to be moved to that location and then a block wall around it. Obviously, we plan on getting rid of that at that location as soon as we can.
Probably been a good idea to have a meeting with them prior to this meeting.
It very well may have been.
Commissioner Quinn?
Um, first of all, Mr. Pitar, I apologize for not calling you back. You called me late this afternoon.
That's okay.
And I always return my phone calls. Um, I, I concur with Commissioner Evans. I was ready to press the green button and I, uh, those pictures astounded me. And I know you, being a man of your word, you were astounded too. And I, I have a feeling that when you saw him, you wanted to kind of crawl right under that hole.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm with Mr. Evans tonight as well. And the other thing, um, I did go over there because I, I did the spin of the city with Commissioner Steinman and we stopped there and we did see a lot of nice changes. And he pointed out to me a lot of things that you have been working on and with your due diligence, they're very noticeable. But the one thing I did notice, and I didn't have a tape measure like my husband would have had, um, there is no way that, that, um, the ramps going into those, uh, portables, a wheelchair can come up and make that turn. I'm very concerned at the width of them and I'd like you to please.
Revisit that.
Revisit that for me.
We will.
Because you know how big that is for me.
No, no, it is. It's a big item.
And, um, I don't ever want you to have to turn away a child just because his mind works but his body doesn't.
Yes.
And that's huge for me. So I'm with Mr. Evans and we're ready to work with you, but you need to, I know those pictures through you for your loop. I saw your face, I know you well, and, uh, it's just not your character. So, um, I'm looking forward to what's next for you.
Well, if I may, Commissioner?
If I may.
This unit and what we just saw is obviously unacceptable. Um, and if staff doesn't approve the location and it's not properly permitted, um, we have no issue with that. We are, we are not asking the commission to approve something that is not properly done through further planning, working with staff, uh, the city attorney's office under just particular uses. And, and so in my estimation, we would be well-served, I think, tonight by taking that and separating that as a separate item. I don't know if we can do that.
If I may.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, Chairman, and the, the relocation of the refrigeration unit is on the new set of plans that you submitted today.
Correct.
Okay. So the plans that is before the commission this evening includes the relocation of the refrigeration unit. Were you to act this evening, you would be approving a site plan that shows that refrigeration unit moved. The issue of the food bank itself and whomever it serves has to do with an SUP that is not before you tonight, and that's a separate issue. So this evening, what you have in front of you is the site plan with regard to the temporary buildings, the improvements that you saw, and the moving and hopefully legalization of that refrigerated unit somewhere else on the property as they show it to the north.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinman?
Let me sort it out. Is C, D, and E temporary buildings going to have stuck on?
Yes.
Okay. Are G and H temporary buildings going to have stuck on?
Those are permanent buildings.
Those are permanent?
Yes, that's correct. That is, our chapel is G and our preschool is H.
Really? They look very temporary to me.
Well, they, whatever they were at the time, um, and of course I wasn't part of that approval process then.
They are permanent now.
They're permanent.
As far as the city's concerned.
Yes, they are.
Okay. They, as you know, I always had an issue about this stuff that was sitting behind C and D that we're talking about now.
Yes, correct.
I, I just, it does not belong.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the people who see it. When you move it over to the new place, it may not be seen if you put a high enough wall around it, but it's going to be heard probably. But the worst part about over there is that the trucks.
Coming.
Will now go in front of G and H down along their property line by the school or chapel or whatever's there and come down and unload in the back there by this location, right where those people are living, right through those trees there. This whole operation on the food bank, please don't take it the wrong way, has to go. It doesn't belong in this location out in the open like this. This is not, this place wasn't meant for that. If it's a food bank, it should be a permanent building that has refrigeration inside of it and proper delivery. This is not going to solve it and I'm not going to support this tonight if we're going to do that.
And I, to be honest with you, I can't disagree with that statement. And if I may, I, I know the heart of my pastor and I think he would authorize me to nix that altogether.
Okay.
If, if we were to receive approval for the rest of the site so we don't have to go through this again.
Right.
That, that we would accept that mixing of that refrigerated trailer. And if at some point in time we build a facility and we want to do it that way and that pleases the commission, then that's what we'll do. Pastor, Pastor told me very clearly, do what's right and do what they need it to be, to be well.
Because after saying something negative here, I want to say very positively, you've taken the right steps. And to see that stuff in the back gone and you're going to do all this, that's, that's very positive.
Well.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, and Pastor would say, don't pat us on the back too much for that because we should have done it before.
All right.
And he wants to take responsibility for it.
That's important.
Yes.
He knows it's close to Easter, that's why.
And we have a very great production Easter to come, if you want to come and visit.
They may move that rock, huh? Every year. Commissioners, have a, have a comment?
I do.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
I've got, um, we've, we've got some needs here. We need a, a landscape plan. We need to see some kind of evidence that the ramps meet the ADA requirements for the modular, you know, I.
A revisiting of that, yeah.
A revisiting of that. I think we've got some operational issues that, uh, probably aren't appropriate for this venue with the choir practicing late and, uh, you know, deliveries till 11:00 PM are just, they're just unacceptable with, with, and the volume of traffic, eight big trucks delivering all the time.
That's going to get eliminated.
That's going to, that's going to go away, but still at the same time, I believe this, uh, this church has off-site operations. Did you mention that, that you?
We have other satellite locations that are actually approved and.
Hopefully some of those might be more suited.
They might be.
For the food program because I, I can't support the food operation going there either. Just, it just seems inappropriate that close to those homes.
Yes.
Even if you just move it around and put a wall around it, it's still going to be there. So where do we go from here? Can we, can we approve this item with the condition that the landscape plan and the ADA issue regarding the ramps be addressed prior to this going to the city council?
Let us hear from our city attorney and then we'll have Director Wheeler address that and then we'll entertain a motion.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just, I wanted to say again for the record that even if you remove the, the refrigeration unit, that doesn't mean that there's not an issue with regard to a possible illegal use on the site, which is the food bank. We don't know whether it's, it's an accessory use to the, the house of worship or not. So let's not, let's not be confused here. If they get rid of the refrigerated unit, there's still a food bank that could be operating there. And I just want to make sure that the commission members are clear because I heard Commissioner Steinman say, well, he said the refrigerated unit will be gone, so the food bank will be gone. That's not what he said. He said, we'll get rid of the refrigerated unit. The problem is they've got a gigantic warehouse where the trucks are taking the dry food. That is a separate issue than what we're doing here tonight. So let's just be clear about that.
Where's the food warehouse? Where's the dry warehouse?
Well, Mr. Steinman, before we get on that, which is not part of this application.
We all know where it is.
I think what probably would be proper would be to direct staff maybe to go out and do a, a total assessment on that property to see what's operating out of there and what needs to be permitted.
Yeah, and I'm sure the applicant will, uh, work with us and on that and we can get the use issue resolved.
Absolutely.
Ready for a motion on item 30?
If I may, the, the change conditions would be condition number four, uh, the date of the site plan and elevations is 3/13/08. An added condition that we will need a full landscape plan, um, within 10 days. And then we also would add a condition to remove the refrigeration trailer from the site within 30 days.
If not sooner.
And, and a review of the.
Uh, that is covered, if I may, sorry, in number 10 that caused with regard to all the building permits, which will qualify ADA requirements.
That's building permits.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion?
With those conditions, I'd make a motion on item number 30, which is Site Development Review 25-253, uh, approval subject to all staff recommendations with the additional conditions as delineated by Director Wheeler.
Motion's on the floor. Please catch your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to council on 4/16.
Item 31.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 31, SDR 25990, applicant owner, Amir Singh, requests for a site development plan review for a proposed three-story, 31,000 square foot hotel and waivers to allow zero feet of landscaping on the north and south property lines on the west side of Rancho, approximately 630 feet south of Lone Mountain Road. Staff?
Staff notes that the applicant has revised the site plan, which now complies with city landscaping standards. Based on that, the landscaping waivers, uh, mentioned in the header are no longer required. Staff finds this application is compatible, the pattern of development that is occurring along this portion of Rancho and recommends approval.
Thank you, applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Scott Sabra, 8610 Southeastern Avenue, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is going to be a Quality Inn and as stated by the, uh, staff, uh, at the, uh, Quality Inn is going to be located on the west side of Rancho and between Craig and Lone Mountain. It's going to consist of 54 rooms and it will be three stories in heights with the bottom story being the parking garage and the, uh, second and third story consisting of 27 rooms apiece. Uh, again, we're not asking for any waivers, that was original, but that has been taken care. We will be fully complying with all landscape waivers and setbacks, or all landscaping requirements and setbacks, et cetera. Uh, again, this is an approved use for the area, we're simply just looking for a, uh, the design review on it. Uh, I'd like to give you just a short background, background on the Quality Inn. It's part of the Choice Hotels International brand of chains, or brand of hotels. The brand includes Comfort Suites, Quality Inn, Sleep Inn, Clarion, uh, Cambria, Mainstay Suites, Suburban Suites, Econo Lodge, and Roadway Inn. They have more than 55, 5, 5,500 hotels in their, in the Choice Hotel International portfolio and their annual revenues exceed half a billion dollars. Some of the reasons I bring this up is there's been some concerns of the economic viability of, uh, of this site. Uh, let me get to that in just one second. There's a kind of a couple of other concerns I had that have been brought up, I'd like trying to alleviate them. Uh, this Quality Inn, like all Quality Inns, is not an extended stay facility. It is set up for, uh, to be, it's not set up to be one nor is it intended used to be one. Further, the Quality Inn brand is not known as a public, uh, to the public as an extended stay facility. Uh, and finally, Quality Inn tends to attract more of the business person type traveler that tend to stay at the facility for one to four days. There are no kitchenettes in here, this is, is not, is just not set up for an extended stay. Does that mean that a few people may not stay for a week or two? Certainly not, that, that always happens. But for the most part, it is, it's not an extended stay, uh, and, uh, it's not what we expect here. Uh, this, uh, this is also a, uh, the type of person that'll stay here is, looks at this as a great economic alternative to high-end hotels. We also believe that this location is well-suited for a Quality Inn. Uh, it has been approved by Choice Hotels International's location criteria. Rancho is a major arterial and is well-suited for this type of product. Uh, Rancho is also a major ingress and egress for many Las Vegas travelers still to this date. Uh, there have been some concerns, uh, that the Quality Inn patrons will have to travel some distance in order to make U-turns to get in and out of the property. Uh, we have concerns with that as well. We would rather there be some cutouts and some turn-ins, but that is, uh, a reality for every business on Rancho, uh, in that area, they're going to face that. Everybody's going to have to go up and make those U-turns until some other alternative is made. Uh, we don't believe that that's going to harm our businesses in any way. Uh, also, there's been some concerns about the adult bookstore to the north. Uh, we believe, uh, again, that if this is a prob, problem for our project, it's a problem for everybody's project around here. Also, uh, we also think this poses some unwarranted presumptions regarding Quality Inn customers. Uh, we just don't feel that, uh, the adult bookstore is a factor in this case. Uh, regarding the economic viability of this project, uh, although there's no guarantees for any project, the owners are not going into this project, uh, and investing three and a half to four million dollars, uh, to see this fail. They, they, they intend for it to, to go quickly and be a booming business. Uh, again, the site has been approved by Hotel, Choice Hotels International for its location and part of what is taken into consideration is the economic viability of this particular location. They believe that it's, will fly here, uh, and they've been doing this a long time, actually since 1939. Uh, so they've come out, they've looked at the pro, the property, they've approved it, they believe the location, uh, it will be well-suited for this and that includes the economic viability of it. Also, Choice Hotels International, uh, along with all this, uh, chains, it's, it's a big brand and with that they have big advertising budgets. Uh, they're, they have a very aggressive marketing campaign and, uh, I don't think a day goes by when I don't see at least one commercial from a Choice Hotel International on TV. So with that, they're going to bring in, they're, they're not going to be, uh, counting on just drive-by traffic. And as a matter of fact, the drive-by traffic, uh, for this, uh, is expected to bring in very little. Uh, they have a, a wonderful call-in and website to do the majority of their, um, reservations. Thank you.
Are you suggesting this is a nationally recognized and respected outfit?
I am suggesting that. And, uh, uh, and then they also, the, uh, um, the other thing that's been brought up is why would people stay at a Quality Inn when there's the Santa Fe and other things just down the street? There's lots of answers for that. Some people just don't want to stay there. If that's called into question, then every other motel in this town should just close up because everybody's going to stay at the MGM. We know that for, we know that that's not the case. There are motels, uh, that in this valley that, uh, just thrive. Actually, sometimes they're even have a higher occupancy than the casino right next door. Uh, with that, uh, also a lot, with a lot of business travelers, a lot of places there are allowed to stay with their expense accounts is are at these places. Uh, the, Choice Hotels International has a very aggressive rewards program that rewards business travelers and other travelers for staying in their chain and they want to keep people there and keep, uh, businesses is coming in, or keeping patrons coming into their business. Uh, and we believe that that is going to answer the economic viability question of this, uh, concern.
Mr. Sabra, I, I'd never put a timer on a applicant presenting, but I'm going to ask you to wrap this up.
All right. Uh, okay, in, in closing, uh, just want to restate that again. This, this is an approved use. We have no waivers. We don't see any reason whatsoever why it shouldn't be there. It's on Rancho. It's a major arterial, major right-of-way. These are up and down Rancho and on other similar streets. With that, I'm asking for your approval and I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open the public hearing. Those that are for or against the item, please come forward.
Mary Kramer, 5209 West Gilmore Avenue, I'm the treasurer for the Northwest Area Residents' Homesteaders Association. At our meeting Tuesday night, we discussed this, and I believe our president was, did contact the developer, the folks regarding this, and invited them to the meeting. However, they did not show up, so we didn't have the opportunity to talk to them in depth about it. Obviously, this is zoned for C2, so that's, you know, there's no opposition there. What we would ask is that, on record, I would like to state that, you know, this is a Quality Inn, as stated, that there be no kitchenettes, there be no microwaves, there be a pool, so that it's truly a hotel. That there be no public laundry facilities on-site, so that it is truly a minimum-stay hotel, as they have stated. Other than that, it sounds like staff has, they've met all the buffers, they've met all the landscaping, so there's nothing that can be stated regarding that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I don't see any landscaping at all. Is there a landscaping plan?
We'll get an answer for you.
And, okay. I just wanted to make sure that there's, that we weren't just looking a block wall around the place.
Would anybody else like to speak for against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
My concern is the C2 units on either side, how tall are they? And the R3 units to the southwest, how tall are they? Are they three stories also?
Yeah, I believe the apartments to the west are three stories. Maybe staff can help me out on that.
Yes, I believe they are three stories.
All right, and then the C2 on both sides, on the north side is vacant currently, and then on the south side is a Sunset rental facility. And I don't know how tall their building is, but it's mainly a storage lot-type facility to handle all their equipment.
Thank you. Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I understand this is a site plan, and I understand this has been zoned for some period of time and all of those good things. There appears to be some issue, at least on this, one of these plans showed a lack of landscaping in a couple of areas, but I think there's another plan that's corrected the staff. There are no waivers on the landscaping, right?
They've revised the landscape plan to show eight feet along the interior property lines as required by city standards and 15 feet along Rancho, also as required by city standards.
And I couldn't tell by the plan what kind of roofing, what kind of textures and materials we're using, because we talked about the three-story apartments, you know, the community to the, adjacent to it. There seems to be a high level of finish, and I would expect the compatibility to be there if we were to approve this. This needs to still integrate into the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Based on the use.
Absolutely. It, the, actually... Tony, could I ask you to come here for just one moment? I believe it's going to be stucco and tile roofing, the same high-level quality that the apartments behind have, basically the same manufacturing type. Am I correct on that?
Yes. Yeah, it's stucco and tile.
Can we get your name on the record?
If you'd like to speak, you can put your name and address on the record and say it yourself.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, and I'm Tony Singh, working with Ace Engineering.
Address, please.
5195 South Dangle Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be matching the elevations to surroundings. Exterior will be stuccoed, and color is going to match. Actually, we provided a colored elevation to City. Maybe it should be in the records. And roof is going to be sloped roof with tiles.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale, any more questions on the roof and the...
Yeah, I mean...
Stucco?
The other part, is this like a central HVAC system or these wall units? I understand the different price points of Choice International. I'm just trying to understand what price point this falls into. So, I, because it is a, we're sitting here reviewing site, and it really is, how does it integrate in the neighborhood? I like your representation that there aren't any kitchenettes. I didn't see any kind of recreational facility, so that leaves me a little concerned, because most of these limited-stay facilities have some recreational environment for their guests, so...
We do have room to put in an exercise room. Clearly, we don't have room to put in a pool. That won't be happening. But an exercise room is something that we could put in with no problem at all, if that's your pleasure.
Do you have additional units like this in Las Vegas? I mean, just...
Just for an owner? I don't believe so.
Or the, or Choice, or if this is a prototype?
Choice have other chains, but I think this is the second one, Quality Inn in Vegas.
Their quality?
Yeah.
I just have a concern that it doesn't raise itself to the, potentially, the level of what we look to have around that corridor, and...
We can't comment on...
Those are some real concerns about how it's, how compatible it is in creating an infill parcel there.
Mr. Sabra? I have to commend you on our phone conversation, on taking notes, because all of my complaints, you seem to have at least addressed. Again, my concern is that I just don't think that this is really a compatible use here. I know the zoning is appropriate, but I'm concerned that we're putting a three-story box, and it's going to be a box with window-unit air conditioning on two sides, and we're going to see, it's just this big blank wall with the roof and windows and air conditioning units, and I just don't think it really fits into what that Rancho corridor has the potential to be. I think, I don't think we're right, you're meeting a standard that I would like to see there. I can't tell you what that standard is. It's kind of like pornography. I don't know what it is until I see it, type of thing. Strictly an analogy, but I'm not going to...
Well-taken.
My apologies to the rest of the commissioners on that comment, but again, I just don't see that this is, it may be appropriate today, but in two or three years, if Quality Inn goes away, we're going to have to live with this. This is my neighborhood. I have to live with this building for the rest of my time here in Las Vegas. And so, I'm concerned about the long-term viability and what this, once it's built, it's there forever. And so, I have to be very careful. And so, you're not going to see my support on this. And if it goes, that the commission wants to approve this, I would like to add a condition that we limit it to two-story. I just, that's the only way that that thing becomes any sort of realistically looking like it belongs there if it's two-story. I don't think the three-story blank wall with wall-unit air conditionings is appropriate, so...
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Any more questions or comments by the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
On item 31, I'm going to step out, and even though staff is recommending approval, recommend for denial in that I just don't think that this is an appropriate location for this type of facility.
Motion on the floor for denial. Casting your vote is to deny. Please cast your vote. And that motion for denial has passed.
And that action is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take about a five-minute break here for some technical difficulties. Item 32, VAR 26747, applicant owner, Morton Fox, requests for a variance to allow a 25-foot front yard setback where 30 feet is required for a proposed port-a-cachere at 2020 Silver Avenue.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I live within the notice area, and so I was not part of the decision-making process on the recommendation and will not be part of the hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
She lives in that area, so she is going to abstain and not participate at all.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, staff finds that the proposed request does not meet the criteria for the approval of a variance and consequently recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
I'm Giselle Fox. I live on 1250 Shadow Lane with my husband, Morton, and we have lived in Las Vegas since 2000, and all of our children have moved and grandchildren have moved, and we bought a smaller house in the same neighborhood, just two streets up. It's an old 64 house, and the garage is too small, and we wanted to get a carport and hired an architect, and he drew up the plans. And foolishly, I did not run it by my contractor, who is kind enough to be here, Mr. Hoffman, and he has the plan. And when he saw the approved plan, we actually have an approved plan, we found out that it is in the middle of the driveway, it is too close to the house, and therefore, I requested a five-foot variance. We are 30 foot away from the street. There are quite a few 25-foot setbacks in the neighborhood. I have two next-door neighbors. Both of them wrote that...
Just put it right in the middle, ma'am.
Right here, yeah?
Perfect.
Both of them agreed that they would be in favor of it, and Mr. Hoffman will show you on the plan, on the site plan, that it's almost impossible to build it the way it is, and a five-foot setback would help tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to speak, sir? Name and address for the record.
Doug Hoffman, 8331 Lori Marie Circle. I came out to look at building this for the Foxes, and he, the architect, had submitted these plans. I've got them here, you can show them.
We can see them.
Pull it up, okay. And the Foxes hadn't looked at this, but when they had discussed this with the architect, he had shown them that he was going to bring the, if you can see my...
We can see you. Perfect.
Okay. He was going to bring this out to the end of the existing driveway. Well, apparently, when he found out that the setback was 30 feet, and that point was 25, he didn't say anything, and he just submitted the plans at 30 feet. And we, no one knew about it until we came out to get ready to build it, so...
Reputable guy, huh?
Well, what can we say? So, and at this point also, the turn, to make this turn, even if we reform the driveway, it's still very tight here for two cars, and I'm concerned that they wouldn't be able to make that turn if one car's parked there.
Mr. Chairman?
That is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Evans?
Did I hear the applicant write in that the immediate neighbors have no objection to this?
Yes, she has letters of support from both neighbors.
Thank you.
And they're in the backup. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, Quinn.
Commissioner Quinn.
I drove through your neighborhood, and it's certainly not, it's fine for you, and what I think is important for all of us is you don't have one single neighbor here that doesn't want to look at it or to complain about it. It's your home, it's what you want to do, so I will make the motion to approve that and that you hope that you have a wonderful life in that house and you enjoy that neighborhood forever.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Fox, I just want to ask you, did you ever think during your time in that neighborhood, passing by that house, that you would one day own it?
It's going to break my heart.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, this item will go to City Council on April the 16th.
Thank you. Item 33, SUP 26569, applicant owner, Calvary Community Assembly of God Incorporated, requests for a special use permit for a proposed social service provider, Dentistry, at 2900 North Torrey Pines Drive. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, while this is a rather unusual request under the heading of a social service provider, based on the rather limited service that it's providing, we find that it will not impact adjacent properties and do recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, my name is Bruce Morris. I'm senior pastor at Calvary Community Assembly of God, and I'm accompanied today by Dr. Andrew Stutz. I reside at 3229 Bishop Pine Street. The special use permit relates to property at 2900 North Torrey Pines Drive. We would like for you to give due consideration to the request for a special use permit and follow the advice of staff to approve. I'd just like to publicly commend Dr. Andrew Stutz. He has served as a doctor of dentistry for 40 years, has been in our community here since 2001, has a practice on Ann Road since that time, and is a wonderful dentist. He's my personal dentist, is a member of our church. In May of last year, along with several other churches in our community, we hosted an outreach at Baker Park near Trinity Life Center, who hosted the event. It's called Convoy of Hope, near the National Day of Prayer. And at that event, we offered free haircuts, cursory dental checks, medical opportunities were provided for people, blood pressure checks, et cetera. Music was provided, fun activities for kids and families and so forth. Dr. Stutz was invited to participate in that outreach, and while there, he literally took some indigent people from the park all the way to his practice on Ann Road to provide services for people who couldn't afford it. After being at that event, his wife, who's with us today as well, Toni Stutz, with tears streaming down her eyes, said, "Pastor, is this something that we could do on an ongoing basis on our campus?" My husband had established that practice in Utah when he was in dentistry there and provided free services to low-income people on a one-day-a-week type of basis there in Utah, and it's something that to God has given him a passion and a burden to do here in Las Vegas as well. Is it something that would be possible for us to host at our church facility? And I said, "It fits perfectly with our vision to reach and help hurting people, low-income people, really people of every stripe, if you will." And so, really, it was at his impetus that we're pursuing this, but it fits so beautifully with our vision and church leadership and our membership as a whole, that we were so proud that he would want to give of his time voluntarily to provide free services for hurting people in our community on a weekly basis.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
The staff is recommending approval, and they're saying that they think this is harmonious and compatible, and the use is relatively non-intensive. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Are you finished?
I could say more, but I'll let it ride at that. Thank you. I just want to show my appreciation as well to Sandberg and Salem, and Tim Grantham in particular architects who have pro bono offered their services to draw up the plans because they believe in what we're doing to help hurting people in our city, too, and I'd like to acknowledge them today.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the board? Commissioner Quinn?
Commissioner Steinman and I visited your property, and we were so pleasantly surprised to see the beautiful church and everything that was going on, but most importantly, that you're going to provide this service there, and I think if everybody did a little bit of something like this, the whole city would be better. And I can't, I guess my feeling is there's nothing worse than having no money and a toothache and a wonderful doctor to fix it for you. So, I will make a motion for approval on this item unless if any of my commissioners want to say anything else.
I just, I wanted to clarify one thing, because I, based on something that we had earlier this evening.
Yes.
Is this... Is this primarily for the members of the church or is it strictly outreach or social ser... I just want to make sure we...
Would you like to go and say, "Doctor"?
In the effort to do something great and good, we wind up creating a slope that we go down on the...
I don't want to speak for the doctor, but my desire is that whosoever will, both people within our church as well as those without, but if there was restrictions on that that we're not aware of, we would need to be notified about that.
If I'm not mistaken, the backup says the facility will be open on Saturdays from eight to six p.m. and treat between fifteen and twenty patients.
Yes.
That's essentially what it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, the social service provider, SUP, application is to allow them to treat persons that are not necessarily members of their congregation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, too. I don't know where we're going here with this, but I've heard the food bank operating out of one, now we've got a dentist office operating out of another church. What are we going to operate next out of the churches is my question and that causes me some concern.
Sure.
And so with that, I will not be supporting this because I think solely that's not a proper use for church.
The only response I'd have to that, Mr. Chairman, is that I'm strictly trying to follow the mandate of the word of God that says that you help the hurting and the needy and even the homeless and the hungry as well, so...
I understand that and they can be helped at the dentist office. I just, I represent an area where I've got ninety-five churches in a five-mile-square radius.
Sure.
So when you talk about Sunday morning, about feeding, if you're not doing five miles an hour down, down these streets, you're probably going to run over a few people with plates in their hand. So while I understand the mission of the church and what it says, I just think when we look at it from a land use perspective, a dentist office should be in its proper place and shouldn't be operating out of the church.
Yes.
Thank you.
I respect your opinion.
Thank you. There was a motion on the floor, I believe, to Commissioner Quinn.
If this is, if the issue is for Commissioner Quinn to make a motion for approval, does that, will it include some hours of operation days?
Yes, yes.
Because the special use nature of this is really...
It's all staff's recommendations.
Well, I think...
Could I then just ask a question regarding, is there a possibility that in the future, should there be more traffic, that there would be opportunity to expand the hours?
Let us take care of this issue and then we'll come right back and answer your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, the staff did not have a condition proposed. However, based on our general position is to go to the application, in this case it says Saturdays, and, you know, nine to five or something that would be a standard hours that the commission wishes to impose, would be an appropriate condition if you wish to do so.
So Commissioner Quinn, I think what you may want to do is offer up a timeframe, hours and days of operation, see if the applicants will agree to that and we'll put that in as a condition.
I believe they were from nine to five on Saturdays, am I correct? Or eight to six on Saturdays?
Under the analysis, it currently reads they will be open Saturday from eight a.m. to six p.m. and treat between fifteen to twenty patients.
And I think that's fair and I think that's enough and maybe in six months or a year you'll come back for more, but let's start with that.
Sure.
Let's make that successful and let's, you know, let's prove everybody wrong that this is going to work and spread.
Yeah, well, and let me just say that it has worked. Dr. Stutz was involved in this type of adventure in the Salt Lake area and so it has worked before quite well.
You know, I sat in the parking lot for, you know, a good twenty minutes with my fellow commissioner and I saw there's room. It's not like just a church with nothing else. There's all kinds of legs to your church and there's places for things to go on and I'm sure the health department will have to come in and make sure you got...
Yes.
So I move for approval and...
The additional condition would read dental services may be given Saturday, eight to, eight a.m. to six p.m. only.
That would be it.
Thank you. There was another, before we cast our vote, there was another, was your issue on traffic? A request for...
No, she answered the question if there would come a time later on if we could extend the hours.
You have to come back.
If it proves to be successful, we would want to come back at a later date.
Motion on the floor for approval with an added condition on hours of operation, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner.
This matter goes forward to the City Council on April sixteenth.
Item thirty-seven, SUP two-six-seven-seven-four. Applicant Outdoor Solutions, owner Frank Calby, requests for a special use permit for a forty-foot-tall fourteen-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at forty-five-ten North Tenaya Way.
Mr. Chairman, did you mean to skip item thirty-four?
What happened to thirty-four?
Whoa.
Thirty-four.
All right, let me back up. That was my fault. Let's go to item thirty-four.
There we go.
I was in the lightning round.
Lightning round.
SUP two-six-five-seven-six. Applicant Lutheran Social Services of Nevada, owner Harsh Investment Properties LLC, requests for a special use permit for a social service provider at five-fifty-one North Pecos Road, Suites one-oh-nine through one-thirteen. Staff?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, staff finds that there will be no impact to adjacent properties and consequently recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Kirk Kaplan. I am the president of the Board of Lutheran Social Services. My address is seventy-eight thirty-five Geyser Hill Lane here in Las Vegas. Right now, we, this property that we would like to move to over on Pecos Road will give us the opportunity to consolidate all of our services that we are now providing to the various clients that we have, you know, and at that point, it would go a long way in helping us, you know, continue our mission and help our people and our clients.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Since this is a special use permit, what generally are the services that you're looking to provide out of this location? Just so we can...
We provide a food bank. My name is Cindy Aker. My address is fourteen-twenty-one Beaver Springs Street here in Las Vegas. I'm the executive director. We have a food bank. We have a project for youth program, which is a preventive program to keep children, basically substance abuse is how we're starting it out. We have supportive housing, which is transitional housing to keep, to take homeless that are in shelters, get them into a situation where they're living in an apartment again, and they are in intensive intake evaluation at all times to help the families learn how to live in an apartment again and take care of their families. We have, we have the warehouse and the food bank, which for the first time we'll be able to combine. And I think that the services that we're providing now are out of where Catholic Charities is, up on fifteen-eleven North Las Vegas Boulevard. And that's right at Owens. What we're doing now is basically handing out bags of food and what we'll be able to do there is actually teach people how to go into a grocery store and shop and get food and make their own meals and learn what it is to eat balanced meals again. We're moving out of the homeless corridor, back into a family situation, so our dynamics are going to change, but we know that going in. It'll mean less traffic than what we've had in the past. I just can see no reason why this is not just a win-win situation for everybody.
Thank you very much.
One more question. Obviously, I know the harsh companies, they're a phenomenal developer and they're very sensitive to their properties. And I appreciate the services you're looking to provide there. I just, I think if we're to approve this, we should at least put a time limit or a time review on this so we can see if we aren't creating problems that are down on the, in the homeless quarter and we are bringing them into a neighborhood setting. That's my biggest concern. But other than that, if we put a time on it, I could support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
I don't know whether there's further discussion. I'm prepared to make a motion.
See Commissioner Steinman edging. Okay, he's good. Just one comment and I'll take your motion. I see you served twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-four pounds of food.
Yes.
My hat's off to you. I think this is the perfect place where you should probably reach out to the dental community. Because serving that much food to folks that may be homeless or need help certainly are eligible to have their teeth checked and I think this would probably be a perfect location. Just a little thought. Commissioner Evans, your motion?
Yes, I would, first of all, applaud you. I mean, the faith community is, steps up to the plate and I think this board and our City Council is sensitive to areas where it may be inappropriate for certain kinds of social services. I don't know that there's anything, any place that would be the ideal location or the best location, but I know that this is surrounded by commercial and industrial and my, I would agree with the staff, I think this is as appropriate as it can get. So my motion would be to follow their recommendation, but I would request that we provide a period of review in a year and I would give you some kind of indication right now that it's important that you ensure that there's not any grief or mischief or problems to the surrounding folks because it means that this special use permit could go away. So I absolutely have faith in your faith. So my motion would be for approval and with a period of, an additional condition of a period of one year for review.
If I may, would that be at a public hearing of the planning commission?
I'm, it's up to, you want to do it administratively or do you want to parade it back here?
I, I mean, my opinion is, I think it's the kind of things that potentially could have neighbor input, so I think we should provide it for a public hearing.
Okay. My thought was simply that if there's a problem, we certainly could make it public, but I'll follow your suggestion and have it a public hearing.
I'll support that in one year if you come back with a dentist. There's a motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And this goes forward to the City Council at their meeting of April sixteen.
I'm sorry?
This goes forward to the City Council at their meeting of April sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item thirty-five, SUP two-six-six-two-four. Applicant Drake Development LLC, owner William L. and Lisa Kircher Trust, requests for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with beer, wine, cooler, off-sale, located at ten Northeastern Avenue. Staff?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, staff finds that the request complies with the minimum standards for a special use permit and recommends approval of the request.
Thank you.
Lenny Scar, thirty-seven fifty-three Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. This is currently a Rite Aid store, which we are hoping to convert into one of those British grocery stores, a Fresh and Easy Neighborhood Market. I'm only here for the use permit itself, but I will give you a little background on what we will be doing to the building. We're going to be tearing down the drive-through canopy. We will be adding a few extra parking spaces. The little diamond windows that you see in the Rite Aid drugstores are disappearing and being replaced with these windows. The HVAC equipment is being removed from the roof and put, placed inside the building itself, so there will not be noise in the neighborhood from that equipment. And we will be upgrading and replacing the landscaping that needs that attention. I've read over all of this conditions staff has and I agree to them and I ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. This is my neighborhood and I welcome these people back. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Vice Chairman Trobich?
I'd just like to ask the staff, item number thirteen tonight on one motion, one vote, is identical to this and the next item. Why was that on one motion, one vote and these two are on public hearing?
If I may, Chairman and Commissioner Steinman, when we take a look at these items, we make a best guess as to whether or not there will be concerns within the neighborhoods. It makes a difference into what geographical area of the city they are in and we make our best guess as we place them on the agenda, as I said, with ones where protests show up that we're not aware of, but it's our best estimation of the items when they come forward to us for review.
Okay. Vice Chairman Trobich?
Seeing no further discussion in regards to item number thirty-five, special use permit twenty-six-six-two-four, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item thirty-five, please cast your vote. That motion has passed. And that will go on to City Council on April the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Item thirty-six, SUP two-six-six-two-five. Applicant Drake Development, owner Nevada Heritage Investments, requests for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with beer, wine, cooler, off-sale, located at sixty-one-hundred Vegas Drive. Staff?
Staff finds this application complies with the separation standards associated with this use and recommends approval.
Applicant?
Lenny Scar, thirty-seven fifty-three Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. As you can see, this is another Rite Aid building, which we're converting to a Fresh and Easy Neighborhood Market. The main difference is the building faces the opposite direction. Read all of staff conditions and I agree with them and I ask for your support.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? If not, we'll take a motion.
I'm making a motion for approval, item thirty-six, with all staff's recommendations.
Motion for approval is on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And also goes forward to Council on four-sixteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item thirty-seven, SUP two-six-seven-seven-four. Applicant Outdoor Solutions, owner Fred, is it Khalid? Requests for a special use permit for a forty-foot-tall fourteen-by-forty-eight off-premise sign at forty-five-ten North Tenaya Way. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item in as much as my, I have a partner that, interest in a property within the notice area.
Thank you.
The proposed billboard complies with all separation standards and staff recommends approval.
Applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Larson, three-hundred South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. As staff had indicated, we do meet all separation requirements, including separation from residential. We are happy to have staff's recommendation for approval and agree with all staff conditions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
As with all billboards with special use permits, we expect something nice. And I mean really nice, not just the old general run-of-the-mill billboard. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Would you like to respond? Mr. Larson?
One of the conditions we have agreed to requires us to modify the structure to match the surrounding or the neighboring building. So we are doing something above and beyond as a condition that we've agreed to.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Steinman?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this one. In all consistency, I'm very opposed to new billboards on the ninety-five freeway, especially when one considers how the new section looks and this section will probably look very similar and quite a nice highway, if you want to call a highway nice. But I'm concerned on this one is that the big bison sign is already in the parking lot out near the freeway and we're going to put another sign right in this parking lot. And that's just too much signage out there. So I don't like this situation. I don't think it's right and I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item thirty-seven.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion on SUP two-six-seven-seven-four, which is agenda item thirty-seven, move for denial.
Motion on the, motion for denial, your yes vote will be for the denial. Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote. And that motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, on item 37, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 37. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Evans? And that motion has passed, showing Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
And that goes forward to council on 416.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item 39, applicant Southwest Engineering, owner Decatur 215 of Nevada LLC, petitioned to vacate portions of Decatur Boulevard at 30-foot access drainage and public sewer easement, a 43-foot public drainage access public sewer easement, and a 56-foot public drainage easement generally located at the northwest corner of Decatur Boulevard and Tropical Parkway. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff finds that the proposed vacation request is consistent with the site development plan that was previously approved for the site, and we do recommend approval of this request.
Thank you.
My name is Sally Phelan. I work for Southwest Engineering, and we accept your recommendations for approval on the vacation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, or a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item in as much as one of the people in my office is currently working with the landlord of this property.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Hi, Sally. Haven't seen you in a while.
I know. How are you, Sam?
Good.
We wanted to know one question Kelly did, is do you know what the score of the game is?[712.04][712.04](Laughter).
The UNLV?
Yes.
No, the, New Mexico.
New Mexico.
We'll get that for you before you leave out of the door.
All right. Move this thing along on item 39. Let's move, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goes to council on 416.
Thank you.
Just let a little birdie tell me the score with 2 minutes and 10 seconds left is Utah 71, and New Mexico 67.
Did you sit here all night? You bet in these games?
Who's asking about the Navajo?
Item 40, TXT 26651, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, discussion and possible action to amend Title 19.06, special use, or special purpose and overlay districts to update the design review process, revise maps, and update signage standards for the casino center scenic byway and entertainment district overlays. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the text amendment that you have before you is specific to the downtown signage districts, and basically it will do four things. Number one, it expounds the boundaries, boundaries of the downtown casino overlay district to include areas just north and immediately south of the current boundaries. Number two, we currently have two sign committees downtown. What we'd like to do is combine those into one committee to review all signage requests. Number three, it will require design review of signage within our scenic byway overlay area, which is the Las Vegas Boulevard area. And then four, it would permit building wrap signage in the casino overlay district and the entertainment district, subject to approval. And so that is the text amendment that you have before you this evening.
Thank you.
When, when you talk, first staff, when you talk about building wrap.
Is there a public hearing?
Yeah. Let me open the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah. When you, when you talk about building wrap, what, what is the parameters? I mean, if you could explain, because is it full buildings, is it?
Yes, it could be up to full building wrap, as you see currently taking place on the strip in the resort corridor. However, this building wrap would be subject to approval by the committee, so there is a review process attached to it.
Is, on these building wraps, is there a, a prescribed time limit? Like, on the strip, there's fairly short windows of time when people put these up, and they're very costly, but I just was trying to figure out if there's something that we're, we set some parameters with this, with this approval?
We don't currently have written in the ordinance as proposed any specific time limit for the building wrap itself. Certainly that's something that we could add.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Truesdale, I, I'm not entirely clear. Are we looking at providing these Mylar-type structures that would wrap around an entire high-rise building? I mean, in effect, what we're doing is creating a 30 or 40-story billboard, and I'm not sure, you know, I'm not entirely opposed to some aspects of advertisement, but I think that unless there's specific guidance, you may end up taking a multimillion-dollar, billion-dollar piece of architecture, and then you've got, you know, all kinds of advertisement copy on it, and I certainly don't want to go down that path. And then maybe someone can address this, because I'm not as familiar with this as I would like to be, but I, I was the chair of that other subcommittee, and, and I'm no longer on that committee, but in the last meeting that I attended, there was some discussion about the combining of the two committees, and whether or not that would, in effect, create a lost voice for some of the property owners downtown. So I, maybe someone can help me with this, and why do we want to combine the two? Is there, is it their thought that it's duplicitous, or?
The standards in both of the districts are the same in terms of signage, and so yes, it is duplicitous to have two committees basically reviewing signage to the same standard. The way that we would propose to set up the committee would still have representation from the property owners, and so consequently, that would be maintained, and so they would still have a voice on the committee in terms of reviewing signage.
Okay. But the, the building wrap part, that part I find very troubling, and I'd ask my fellow commissioners what their thoughts are.
Well, I was just placed on that commission. Is that the committee I was just put on?
Yes, that's correct.
My, my question would be, we had one item that day on the agenda, so how much, is there enough, you know, work for both of these committees? Because, I mean, I loved going, and it was fun and everything, but we had one item, we were out of there in like 20 minutes, and, I mean, I'm looking at the tax dollars expense. No, just kidding. There's no tax dollars.
You're there for free.
I'm there for free, but I'm just saying, is there enough work for two committees to do such a thing when we were there in and out of there in 25 minutes with one item? That's just my, my thought.
And, and again, there really isn't the need for two committees with the amount of applications that we have coming through, that.
If I may, on the wrap, I think that temporary building wrap is, if we add that adjective and imply, I mean, certainly our intent was not permanent. I mean, that was never our thought.
But wouldn't that, wasn't that the possibility of what it will morph into? I mean, I want to be real clear about.
It wasn't clear.
What we're trying to permit. And aren't we somewhat stymied by constitutional parameters that, you know, are we going to have payday loans and, you know, 99-cent pizza specials on a 45-story building? I mean, I don't know. We have absolutely vodka bottles on some of the hotels. I, I'm, I just don't, I know, I'm curious as to why we're going down this road when we spent every minute of every meeting of, I've been on for seven years fighting billboards, and now we want to provide, in effect, what's 30 and 40-story billboards? Without any time parameters or aesthetic review, or, I mean, why are we doing this?
Thank you. If I may, the, this was the language that was used in the arts district. This is what came up when we did separate design standards in the arts district, was specifically to allow, if you will, flush-mounted, which is the wrap, is, is what we're speaking of here. The intention was certainly temporary. The committee is specifically to address the aesthetics, and the size, and the, the texture, and the location. You're correct that the content, the words, if you will, is not within the purview, as it is not in any type of signage. But the size, color, location, and all of that, and the timing, is all part of what would be before the, the committee, and then, of course, appealable to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Truesdale?
You know, I, I apologize. I read this briefly, but didn't really focus on some of the things, and the, the building wrap, while I think appropriate in some venues, just put this image in your head. If we find enough money to build an Agam sculpture on Boulder, that little park down there, and we create this world-class sculpture, and there's three or four single-story old homes that no one can rent, you could have the 69-cent breakfast, you could have the lobster, you know, fest tonight, shrink-wrapping a single-story building, and in the name of commerce, or we, we would have, forget the gorillas that Commissioner Evans was worried about on East Sahara, we could have a herd of gorillas all over downtown. I, I would hate to see that every, one, or every residential building that somebody can unload, or they want to leave it blank so they can hold out for a future value of property, could be shrink-wrapped without a lot of control. Residential buildings that may not have full-time permanent occupants, it'd be easy to shrink-wrap or Mylar the windows, and really, it could, it could go to a, a point of somewhat limiting value. Now, the hotel casinos, I think those are commercial buildings, they, they're a little different venue, but they're still, we should have some level of control. I'd hate to have something slip through, and 10 years from now, we have a previ, you know, former NBA star in a Nike uniform, and the, the thing peeling off the side of the building. We, we get so concerned about the billboard issues, the size and scale, and how they, they can be per, too much information per version of our lives. I, I think we need a little more definition on what we, what would be appropriate as shrink-wrapping buildings, and what size buildings. That's a concern, and as a part of disclosing, since this does include some of the scenic byway. I do own property that's along the scenic byway, and if it's appropriate, I would abstain on this motion, but there are certain signs, like the one we saw tonight, that's a vintage sign on a building. I would hate to say we get into the point of making those signs go away in the effort to create new signs in a code.
Mr. Chairman, is there, and maybe through you, Director Wheeler, is there any sort of a time crunch, or, I, I'm still perplexed about how this came to be, and I'm wondering if there would be an appetite to, to maybe study it a little more and then come back again, or is there?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Evans, we can certainly do that. The issue has been, as you have brought up, there is some fine-tuning of the ordinance that we wanted to do. This is just in the casino overlay, it's not the rest of downtown, and the idea had come forward with regard to taking the language that was used in the arts district with regard to, if you will, the flush-mounted or, or shrink-wrap, or whatever we're calling it, of the temporary signage, and to bring that into the casino overlay district. We can certainly postpone it and obey it. We need to move forward at some point, but.
Would not the casino overlay include the expanded newly-developed casino overlay on what is essentially between Main Street and, in the REI neon?
No, the downtown, this is the downtown casino.
Give the boundaries of this, would you?
The map is on the screen.
We don't have that map. It's on the screen.
It's on the screen. Yeah, it's on the screen. It's very difficult to read.
Right. It's just a, it's Ogden and Fremont and Carson between the Boulevard and Main.
So essentially, it covers the downtown hotel casino properties?
That's it, yes.
It does not cover any of the 61A?
None of the 61A.
But all of those other little buildings within the, within the area would be eligible to do the shrink-wrap?
They would be eligible to apply and come before the, the review board, and if the, if it was not a, a plan that met with the approval of the board, then.
Well, and, and that was my, my last question is, is there any discretion in terms of content appropriate?
Not content, again, but the size, the material, the location, the visibility, all of that, the material, all of that is within the purview.
But just hypothetically, aren't we inviting a lot of mischief at this juncture?
It is certainly never staff's intention to invite mischief.
Oh, I said an unintended consequence. I, I'm thinking of, there was one particular business which thankfully no longer exists that was at Oki and, and the Strip, and a play on words, it was pretty inappropriate. And I was told there was nothing we could do to stop it, and yet it essentially wrapped around the building. And I don't want to invite those kinds of things as we try to revitalize the downtown. So I'd like to study all the consequences that maybe we haven't thought of.
Mr. Evans, how long would you like to hold this?
Oh, 2010, maybe?[1563.82][1563.82](Laughter). What would be appropriate?
In that case, I would, if you want to wait 30 days, if it's the, if it's the appetite of the commission to act and recommend denial of that portion.
Well, I'm not, I don't know. I mean, I'd like to learn more about it, and I, I wish I had made a few calls to your office that probably could have clarified it.
So is your motion going to be to hold it, and then?
Well, whatever meeting that it would be most appropriate in terms of our, the volume.
I know.
Are there any new, are any of our new high-rises in this district?
Yeah. Streamline.
Uh, no. Streamline is across the street.
Streamline is just outside of.
Outside?
No. This is real, this is the casino, the old sta, you know, this is Glitter Gulch and, and adjacent.
New Golden Nugget?
Golden Nugget, yes, is within this area. Yes.
This is just new clutter.
If you want to.
That's what we're going to call it.
Let's entertain a motion, please.
Well, my thought is to hold it for a period, 30 days.
That would be April 10.
There's a motion on the floor to hold item 40 for 30 days until April 10. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And any of your questions, please let us know, so that if there's research, or concerns, or language, we will certainly, you know, work with you on that to get you to a decision point.
Thank you. Item 41 is a brief presentation on capital improvement projects in the downtown area. Staff?
Yes, we did catch that reference to brief. The wheels of government sometimes spin very slowly, so when things happen, we want to tell you about them, and what we'd like to do is report on capital improvement projects in the downtown area. We as staff have been working on trying to get things started here in the downtown area for at least the past four or five years, so we'd like to report on some of those projects. And I will go through these very quickly. We have them illustrated on the map, which is on your monitors. If I could go to the next slide, please. And if you could advance the next slide for me, please. One of the first projects that we'd like to talk to you about is the Boulder Plaza Park. I'm sure with the recent vacation issue that we've had, you're quite aware of it. The site plan for this project was approved some time ago. We have funding in place from the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act to do the infrastructure for the plaza itself. The Neighborhood Association is raising money for the sculpture that will go into the park. Next slide, please. Another project that we have down in the arts district area is the construction of sidewalks. We're using funds from a variety of sources, including funds for decorative benches from the Las Vegas Arts Commission. We're also using money from our sidewalk fund and from other general funds, and this is to construct sidewalks in the downtown area where we currently do not have sidewalks, or where they are in disrepair. Next slide, please. We also have funds aligned for constructing medians along Charleston Boulevard. $500,000 of those funds come from the Nevada Department of Transportation through their community enhancement program. We also have funds from the general fund available for that project. Not only will it provide medians like we see on Las Vegas Boulevard, but it will also provide some degree of traffic control as well. Moving on to the next slide. In the arts district, we have a gateway project underway to identify the east and west entrances to the arts district. We, again, will be receiving funding from NDOT for that. We, again, will be receiving funding from NDOT for that. And then the Las Vegas Arts Commission has also contributed the balance of funding for that project, which will include the gateways and also blade signage identifying the district. Next slide, please. As we move further north in the cultural corridor area, we do have a median project that would extend the medians in Las Vegas Boulevard northward of the freeway. And then also restoring some of our historic neon signage from the neon boneyard to be placed on sticks, much like the horse and rider sign that we currently have at the intersection of Las Vegas Boulevard and Fremont. Moving on to the next slide. Also in the cultural corridor area, we have received funds from the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act for the construction of a trail in the cultural corridor that will lead from the museum that will be developed at our post office, our historic post office building, to the seven institutions that are along the cultural corridor, along North Las Vegas Boulevard. Moving on to our next slide, please. Also in the cultural corridor, we've used Sniplama funds to develop the neon boneyard park that will be located immediately adjacent to the boneyard itself. Those funds were used to purchase two properties for the location of the park and also the construction of the park itself.
And if you go by there, the La Concha is put back together again. It's really very exciting.
Next slide, please. Also in the cultural corridor area, we have funds available also from the Sniplama program for the construction of a pedestrian bridge across North Las Vegas Boulevard, approximately just immediately north of where the stoplight is there at Reed Whipple. We have also received funding from the Las Vegas Arts Commission to decorate the bridge, if you will, so it's not just the standard pedestrian bridge structure. So it harmonizes with the cultural corridor area.
There's a lot of schoolchildren that come into the area that go to the historical, the Natural History Museum and then to the Children's Museum on the library side, so.
When, when you look at a bridge like this, do you design street-level pedestrian barriers to direct people up? I, I've just, I, actually, I like this, but I was just, one, I was curious about.
There are railings on the ramps themselves, but it's not quite as directed as you will see on Las Vegas Boulevard with those over crossings.
Just some of these bridges, people go, eh, I don't want to walk up the stairs, so they'll run across the street anyway.
But anyway, that is the conclusion of our presentation. Again, we're using funding from a variety of sources to get these projects underway. We're very excited about some of the improvements in the downtown area. And again, we appreciate all the assistance that we receive from all of you who contribute to the revitalization of our city.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. The next item, item 42, citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda may be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Public hearing is now open. So Farlow is not speaking. The public hearing is officially closed. And we would like to adjourn the meeting. And once again, go Rebels. Oh, Bart, before we leave, would you like to introduce our gentleman from Public Works?
The gentleman from Public Works is the traffic engineering representative.
We're doing an introduction of new personnel?
He's a traffic engineering representative. His name is Jonathan Grobemacher, and he's been here a couple of times before. But he's, he's kind of my right arm for traffic questions.